If everyone can take a seat, the special council meeting of the Richmond City Council is now in session. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bana?
Here.
Vice Mayor Jimenez?
Presente.
Councilmember McGlaughlin?
Here.
Councilmember Robinson is joining us via remote, and she is located at Moxie, Washington, downtown DC at 1011 K Street Northwest, Washington DC 20001.
Hello, I'm here, thank you.
Councilmember Willis is absent for roll call. Oh, he? Okay. Sorry. Councilmembers Zapata?
Here.
And Mayor Martinez?
Here.
First item under agenda is statement of conflict of interest. Are there any? Hearing none. Under agenda review, we will allow people to speak. Under the consent calendar, you'll get one opportunity to speak on any item under the consent calendar. And also, we will move item G2, and that is consideration of a possible ballot measure to transition Richmond's municipal voting method to instant runoff elections. That will be the first item we will hear under new business. Okay?
Thank you. Next item.
Our next item is consent calendar.
Do we have a motion?
Consent calendar. We're going to hear the speakers first?
Yes.
Okay, we do have speakers. Those speakers are Mark Wasberg, Karen S., Jonathan M., and Cordell Hindler. And those are our in-person speakers. Please come forward. You'll have two minutes to address the council. Cordell Hindler?
Oh, Mark Wasberg, I'm sorry.
Press the button. Press the button. Press the button.
The word Judah came from the tribe of Judah. The word Jew came from the tribe of Judah, which was a real person. His father was Jacob. Now, what's happening in Israel right now in the Middle East, there is no genocide. Is this all just a bunch of pack of lies? What they're doing right now to Israel, the same thing that Hitler did to the Jews in Germany, exact same thing, massacring these people, killing these people.
I'm sorry, are you speaking to item F4, Jewish American Heritage Month?
Oh, was it on four or two? Huh?
You're speaking under open forum, so you can speak on any item under open forum. You have two minutes to cover any item under open forum.
Well, I looked on the dealer, said it didn't have an open forum, but anyway.
Under the consent calendar.
Under the consent calendar, yes.
Is that calendar?
Any item under the consent calendar.
All right. Well, we all know what's happened in the Middle East. It's totally a damn disaster, right? Don't worry, the United States is going to help win this war. So you might forget about this.
Excuse me, are you speaking to item F4, Jewish American Heritage Month?
F4? Don't interrupt me, I'm talking. We're on the open forum, right? She said we're on the open forum.
We are, yes, and the open forum.
Okay, we could talk about anything we want on the open forum, but as long as it's not on the agenda, right?
Sorry.
You could speak, oh, I'm sorry.
Right?
You may speak on any item that is listed under consent calendar only.
On the special meeting?
Right.
Well, I'll go ahead and save my comments for later.
Karen S.?
Hi, my name is Karen Stiller. I'm Senior Director of Jewish Affairs at the Jewish Community Relations Council. So oftentimes, adoption of a resolution about a commemorative month is a joyous occasion and support members of our local community. But I feel like something else is going on here, and why is that? That's because, first of all, you've chosen to adopt a resolution about the Jewish community on a Jewish holiday. This is not allowing some members of our community to be present and accept this resolution. It is the last night of Passover, the last day of Passover, for observant Jews, so Orthodox and conservative Jews, the holiday ends at sundown tonight. So they would not be able to be here to be honored. So I think that that is a pretty egregious overlook. The second issue is that the proclamation fails to mention the specific hatred and discrimination that targets Jews called antisemitism. The language's generic statement about bigotry without specifically naming antisemitism denies visibility for one of the oldest and most pernicious forms of hate, and makes the Jewish community feel unseen and unheard. And of course, this comes at the same time as another resolution that is important to the Jew and concerning for the Jewish community is on the agenda this evening, once again excluding members of our community from participating in this. Thank you.
Jonathan M.?
Thank you. I'm here to speak on item F4, Jewish American Heritage Month. My name is Jonathan Minzer. I serve as the Director of External Relations at the Jewish Community Relations Council, where the largest collective voice of Bay Area, Jews representing over 50 synagogues and organizations across the Bay Area, including Temple Beth Hillel of Richmond and hundreds of residents. I'll speak later on the meeting on item F1, but now I want to express our deep concern about the timing of this meeting and the lack of support that this council continues to show for the local Jewish community. Tonight, there are two items on the meeting agenda that directly impact the Jewish community, a proclamation on Jewish American Heritage Month and a proposal on divesting from companies doing business in Israel. And given the controversial nature of one of these items, what does the council decide to do? It schedules a special meeting on the final day of Passover, which prevents religiously observant Jews from participating in this meeting. This decision flies in the face of the government values of inclusiveness and equity, which you all say you thrive on. And sadly, this is not the first time that the city council has shown a contempt for the Jewish community. On October 24th, just 17 days after the worst massacre of Jews since the Holocaust, you adopted an inflammatory resolution that falsely accuses Israel of apartheid and ethnic cleansing, as Israelis were still bearing those killed after the horrible Hamas terrorist attacks. And we've also tracked ongoing hateful rhetoric at rallies that were attended and even repeated by council members here on this dais. Sadly, this has caused Jewish community commissioners to resign from your local boards and made many of your residents feel unsafe. So here's my proposal, council members. Rather than hastily moving forward with items that directly impact the Jewish community, on a Jewish holiday nonetheless, we ask you to postpone these items in order to convene a listening session with Jewish-elected civic and community leaders of all backgrounds and political viewpoints, not just those that might just make you feel comfortable. This would be an important step to build trust and fully understand the concerns and needs of our community. I will end with the common word of my people, chutzpah. The chutzpah of this council, the nerve of this council to do this on the last night of Passover is reprehensible. Thank you.
Cordell Hindler?
So, good evening, Mayor Martinez, council. I'm here to speak on two items this evening. So I expect all of you council members, as well as the public, to attend the Cinco de Mayo Festival, which is held this coming weekend on May 4 through May 6. And I'm like, I am going to be, I'm in support of that. I will attend as well as Cinco de Mayo and Juneteenth, so I will be attending both of those events, as well as Richmond Rainbow Pride, too. So I'm going to try to make it all three events, so that's one. But the second item I'm here about is the port, because if you recall, two weeks ago, after listening to the people from GPP Analytics, something came out of me, and I said, I do agree with one of the findings that I have noticed, hiring a finance manager as well as a maintenance manager, because how are you going to run a port without those two positions? So I'm in support of both of those positions. So I'm asking that the council, as well as you, Mayor Martinez, since this is your item as well, so I'm in support of the port, too, because I get a lot of feedback from people saying, what is going on with the port? And I said, I'll tell you why, because the city has not had a port audit since 2007. And I said, no, I do like the ideas of a finance manager and maintenance manager. So I'm asking that this council to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Our last in-person speaker under consent calendar will be Jamin Purcell.
Jamin Purcell, Richmond resident, and I am here in the capacity as co-chair of Richmond Rainbow Pride. I would just like to express the gratitude of the Richmond Rainbow Pride Board and members for the support from the city. It was 10 years ago that it was, hate was being spread within this council chambers against our former council member, Jevonka Beckles, one of the first openly lesbian Afro-Latina council members in the city of Richmond, and to see how far along we have come, where we originally started in Marina Bay and have since coming back from the pandemic, are now in the center of the heart of Richmond in Civic Center. We look forward to being able to continue to serve the LGBT QI+ community, and we appreciate the support for not just our community of Richmond Rainbow Pride, but also for Cinco de Mayo and Juneteenth, because the LGBT community is in all communities across the board. And so I want to thank you for your generosity, but as well, we look forward to being able to see all of you out at June 2, when we have our Pride Festival. Thank you so much.
Okay, we'll now move to our speakers that are joining us online. If you are speaking under, well, right now, we're speaking under the consent calendar. If you have comments on any of the items on the consent calendar, that is what is up for discussion now. So just a word, please call the speakers.
Okay, I have Lisa Johnson and Alison V. Lisa, well, Lisa's hand went down. Alison V., you'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start.
I am against you voting. You've got to not vote for BDS. This is simply racist. This is simply just anti, you're contributing to the hate towards Jews and the violence that is going towards Jews. This is a sweeping overstatement, not well thought out.
Excuse me, this is.
And I have time, sir. I have time. It's my.
All right, go ahead, Mayor.
We're still on items on the consent calendar.
Okay.
She was talking about BDS, which is.
Okay, so I'll go to the next speaker, Lisa Johnson. You'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start.
Hi, good evening. I just want to echo everything that Mr. Jonathan Minzer said to you this evening. To do what you did with this proclamation on the last day of Passover is such a slap in the face to the Jewish community on their holiday. What you did in October was reprehensible, and now you followed it up with this again. You're not creating a safe space for people in that council chambers. You don't create a safe space for them in the community, and you continue to ignore their pleas for simple recognition on the same level that you do everybody else. I just hope you really, truly mean what you say. You're here to represent everybody, because that's not what you're practicing, and that's not the messaging you're sending. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and I do see two more hands. I see Michael Harris and Avner Greif. Michael Harris, you'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start.
Thank you very much. I would just like to add to the voices that have already spoken this evening opposing this BDS proclamation.
I'm sorry, sir. This is not the time to speak to that. We're speaking to the items on the consent calendar.
And there are no more hands. People wore their hands, so those who are the last speakers.
All right, in that case, do I have a motion to accept the consent calendar?
I'll move the consent calendar.
Ms., if I can recuse myself from, just because this is coming in front of me, another position for the, I think this is being sent over to BCDC, and I sit on BCDC, so the, where is it? The F1, I think I need to recuse myself from that, just because this letter is being sent over to the board that I sit on. So I think it might be a conflict there. But other than that, I'm good with it.
Do we have a second?
I second.
Are we ready?
All right.
Councilmember Bana?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jimenez?
Yes.
Councilmember McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Robinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Willis is absent. Councilmember Zapata?
Yes.
And Mayor Martinez?
Yes.
The motion passes with Councilmember Willis absent.
Next item.
Our next item under new business is item G1, receive a presentation on instant runoff voting from CalRCV and direct the city attorney's office to draft language for an IRV ballot measure and to an ordinance language to allow city council to place that IRV ballot measure language on the 2024 general election ballot.
Good, thank you. This item is an action before the council to hear a report on instant runoff voting and consider drafting a ballot measure for the 2024 general election that upon passage would amend the city charter to specify instant runoff voting as the election method for Richmond's municipal elections. Now, we ask ourselves, why do we want to change our election process? We're doing it to ensure that our voters are heard and that Richmond elections are decided by its residents, not corporations, not special interest groups, or those with wealth. We're trying to ensure that Richmond lives up to the adage of the people by the people, for the people by the people. We, as Richmond leaders, know that our residents have the knowledge and political awareness to rank candidates and to vote for them on their merit, their integrity, compassion, and vision for the welfare and the future of the city of Richmond. The city of Richmond has been a shining example to the nation that an individual's vote is more important than corporate influence. We believe in the free will of our citizens and their abilities to discern between what is best for ourselves as to what is best for only the wealthy among us. Instant runoff voting is the opposite of other initiatives that seek to disenfranchise voters and, once again, open the doors to big money into Richmond's political arena. So with that, I would like to start the presentation. Oh, I believe there's, well, we'll do the presentation, and then we'll have comments from council members. Okay, go ahead and sit over there. Welcome.
Press the button for your mic. Press the button for your microphone. Press it again until it turns red. There you go.
There you go. Okay.
All right, much better.
Tech overcome. So, good evening. Thank you, Ms. Mayor, for that introduction, and thank you to all the council members for your hard work and for the invitation to talk about how we can improve elections in Richmond and join a growing number of cities and states that are implementing instant runoff voting, also known as ranked choice voting. You'll hear us use both terms tonight. And thank you, everyone who's here tonight, for your patience. I know that there are weighty matters to discuss, so we'll try and be brief and to the point in our presentation. Next slide, please. Before we dive into the presentation, just some introductions. I'm Ken White. I'm a Richmond resident. I work with nonprofits, and I'm also a volunteer with California Ranked Choice Voting. With me is Jim.
Yeah, Jim Lindsay, co-founder of California Ranked Choice Voting Institute.
And also Marcela is online.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. I'm Marcela Miranda Caballero, Executive Director at California Ranked Choice Voting Institute. Happy to be here today.
Thank you. Next slide, please. So we'd like to share why we believe instant runoff voting can inspire trust in elections and confidence in government. We see a unique opportunity for Richmond to lead by putting instant runoff voting measure on the ballot in November. We'll also explore how instant runoff voting works and the benefits it could bring to Richmond. Next slide, please. California Ranked Choice Voting Institute is a nonprofit, nonpartisan nonprofit with a vision of California where all residents feel represented and heard. Our mission is to expand the use of ranked choice voting to ensure we all have a greater voice in our democracy. Our goal is to bring ranked choice voting to California statewide in 2028. Already, many cities like our neighbors in Albany, Oakland, Berkeley, San Francisco have implemented ranked choice voting. Next slide, please. So, as council members know quite well, Richmond City Council elections are currently decided by plurality, where the candidate gets the most votes in each district wins, even if that candidate gets less than 50% of the vote. The current council did not create this system. Almost all cities in California use plurality voting, and it always has the same disadvantages, which we'll get to in a moment. The current council does have an opportunity to create something better and could be a model for other cities here and around the nation. Next slide, please. As you know, there is already an initiative headed to the ballot. It's called the Richmond Election Reform Act, which has two basic problems. First, it adds an additional election with additional costs, not only for the city, but also for the candidates who would need to run two campaigns. This would likely freeze out less well-funded candidates. Compounding the problem, Richmond primaries historically have had lower turnout than the general election. In 2022, the Richmond primary had about 10,000 fewer voters, about one-third fewer than in the general election. Also, those primary voters tend not to be very representative of the city compared to the general election voters. Second, since primary voters could select a winner without a runoff, a third of Richmond voters would essentially be disenfranchised. And if a runoff is needed, most voters will not have had a say in who competes in that runoff. Under RERA, races would be decided either outright or in poorly attended primaries, and the two runoff candidates would be selected by a minority of voters. Next slide, please. So instant runoff voting is where voters can clearly express their preferences, and the council has an opportunity to offer the voters a more fair and inclusive option. And with that, I'd like to press it to Marcela to explain more about instant runoff voting. Next slide, please.
Can Marcela get the next slide, please? So instant runoff voting has become the fastest-growing nonpartisan voting reform in the nation, with more than 11 million voters now having voted with ranked ballots in the US since 2004. And as the years have gone by, it's been getting adopted in more and more places. Here in California, San Francisco, Berkeley, Oakland, and San Leandro have been using RCV for over a decade. The people of Maine and Alaska have adopted it for their statewide elections, and New York City used it in their Democratic primary for the first time in 2021. Now, we have a lot of data on how it performs here in California, across the country, and around the world, and the evidence is strong that it improves our democracy. Next slide, please. Can we do one more slide over? Thank you. So how does IRV/RCV work? We have a short video here to explain how it works. If we can have the tech team play it and cut it right at a minute and 35, that would be fantastic.
So what is ranked choice voting? In most parts of the United States, voters select a single candidate for each position on their ballot, and the candidate with the most votes wins. This is known as single-choice winner-take-all, which can sometimes result in the election of a candidate who earned only a small percentage of the vote, even when the majority of voters supported other candidates. But that's not the only way of electing our leaders. Ranked choice voting is another voting method which allows voters to rank their candidates in order of preference. In a ranked choice voting election, a candidate needs to earn more than half of the votes to win. All first choices are counted, and if a candidate has a majority, then they win, just like any other election. If not, the candidate with the fewest votes is eliminated, and voters who picked that candidate as number one will have their votes count for their next choice. This process continues until a candidate earns a majority and is declared the winner. Let's look at an example. Here, you select orange as your first choice candidate, yellow as your second, pink as your third, and green as your final choice. The first choices are counted. Yellow earned 35%, orange 21%, pink earned 28%, and green earned 16% of the vote. Because nobody won more than 50%, the candidate with the fewest votes is eliminated, and voters who picked him as their first choice have their ballots count for their second choice. This continues until a candidate receives more than half of the votes, or 50%.
Great, thank you so much. Can we go ahead and go to the next slide? So why IRV, majority winner in one election? As previously mentioned, Richmond currently elects using a plurality system, so candidates are elected with the most votes relative to other candidates. By using IRV, candidates are elected by a majority, giving them a stronger mandate to govern. Additionally, when we use IRV, we don't have a spoiler effect problem. In other words, no vote splitting or feeling as if you have to choose between the lesser of two. of two evils when choosing between two candidates. And lastly, there's no primary or special runoff election needed, and that's important to note in terms of financing when it comes to cities. Next slide, please. The other reason why IRV is so great is because it really does deliver more representative and equitable outcomes, with more women and candidates of color elected. Take, for example, in the Bay Area, there are four cities that currently have 61% of their elected offices held by people of color. Now, before IRV, that was 38%. So, it went up from 38% to 61% of these elected offices being held by people of color. Now, similarly, Oakland had never elected a woman mayor in its 160-year history before IRV. Now that it has IRV, it's elected three women in a row as mayors. Now, I want to note that part of the reason this happens is because there are fewer bearers entry for such candidates, and that's partially because the cost to run is reduced with an instant runoff election compared to an election that holds a primary and a general. So, in other words, the amount of money candidates have to raise is significantly less, and it's helpful for candidates who might not have a big funding apparatus. And finally, in New York City's first RCV election, the people of New York elected 31 of 51 people of color and women, up from 15 the cycle before. Next slide. So, to conclude why IRV, civil discourse has improved amongst candidates. To win, candidates require enthusiastic and broad support. That means candidates need a strong number-one vote amongst voters. However, that also means that they may need a number-two and number-three vote to achieve majority. So, what does that mean? When you're campaigning, it means you should avoid negative campaigning. It's an unwise tactic. You want to work with other candidates for their support, and this, in turn, leads towards more civil campaigns that are focused on substantive issues that matter to voters. Next slide.
Thanks, Marcela.
And I'm going to hand that off to my colleague, Ken.
Thank you, Marcela. So, just to wrap up with some specifics about Richmond, beyond the obvious benefit of electing consensus winners, RCV has a number of other benefits. Ranking candidates gives voters more choice and more voice, and it's not difficult. For example, in New York City's first time using RCV, 90% of the voters ranked two or more candidates on their ballot, and 95% of notoriously difficult-to-please New Yorkers said they found the ballot easy to complete. RCV also increases voter participation. Berkeley, Oakland, and San Francisco have all seen an increase in turnout since switching from a two-round runoff, what the other proposal advocates for, to ranked choice voting. And RCV reduces vote splitting and spoiler effect, as Marcela mentioned. It also allows candidates to build coalitions and allows endorsing organizations to support multiple candidates. Next slide, please. Quick word on logistics from the next slide. Yeah, thank you. Other counties have paid $25,000, $85,000 to have Dominion Voting Systems turn on the ranked-choice voting feature that is already in place in those machines, and some counties have tried to pass that cost on to cities. To address that concern, the ballot measure could be written to enable implementation only if the cost is less than a certain amount. There's a threshold. And on readiness for RCV, during the first campaign, workshops would be held across the city to educate voters and community members about RCV, how to fill out ballots, what to expect at the voting booth, and so on. Post-implementation, ongoing education through the registrar of voters and community groups can ensure that everyone, new voters, 18-year-olds, et cetera, knows how to vote. So, in sum, our goal is for Richmonders to have an easy-to-use, error-free system that clearly conveys voter preferences and inspires everyone's confidence in elections and our democracy. And please go to the next slide, and we'd welcome the opportunity to respond to any questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Bada?
Thank you for the presentation. I appreciate it. Sounds very interesting. So, on the ballot, will we have the other scheme and this one for voters to vote on or in November? This November?
I'm sorry, I didn't quite catch the question.
So, if the council approved ranked choice voting, we also have another scheme that signatures were collected for, and it's going to be on the ballot?
Yes.
Both will be on the ballot this November?
Yes.
Okay. So, if I leave my first choice blank, will my vote be counted?
Yes, that is the rule, is that it's, when you're counting, when you're an election administrator and you're looking at a ballot, you have to apply voter intent. And in ranked choice voting, your vote goes to whoever is the top remaining candidate. So, if you didn't vote number one, but you put somebody number two, that's your top remaining candidate.
Oh, that would be considered number one?
It would be counted. That's your top remaining candidate, so it's like a number-one vote.
Okay. Can I put the same name in all the slots, or it would be ignored?
That would be a legal vote. If you voted, let's say there were five slots or something, and you voted the same person in all five, it just wouldn't be useful. Because what you're doing with ranked choice voting is you're saying, here's my favorite person. This is the person I want. And if they lose, who's my second favorite? Your vote only goes to your second favorite if your favorite loses.
Okay. I thought if the first, in the first round, if my candidate does not gain enough number of votes, then the second round, both rank one and rank two will be counted together for that person.
No, that's a completely different system called Buckland that nobody uses because it has problems, which would be getting way into the weeds. It's very simple. Just vote your number-one, your favorite person, then who's your second favorite person?
So, how would it be counted? If nobody gets majority?
Right.
Well, what will be counted?
So, what they do is, you know, per the videos, they take the person who has the least number of number-one votes. They're eliminated.
Yep.
And the computer, so it can do it very fast, or a human being could do it, looks and sees, who did they put number two? Who's their second? Who's their first? Who's their backup person?
So, number ones will be ignored for everyone, and then number twos?
So, let's say that you voted for Smith, and nobody got a majority. But Smith had only 100 votes. So, you just look at all the people who voted for Smith, and you say, okay, who's their, Smith is eliminated. Didn't have, you know, had very few votes. So, then, you don't want to waste those voters' votes. All their votes still count for whoever they put number two. Right? So, you keep doing that until there's a majority. You throw out the person who has the least number of votes, and you take each ballot, and you take their number-two or number-three, whoever is left.
So, in the second round, if nobody has majority, only choice number-two of all the ballots will be locked?
Choice number-two of whoever got eliminated. So, if Smith got eliminated...
Oh, got it. And that will be added to rank-one winners?
Yes.
Okay. And the second elimination, then?
Yes.
Got it. Thank you.
And this will all have, this is why we have voter education and actually candidate education, because it's different running campaigns under RCV, a very strong education campaign before the first time.
And you'll be paying for that, not the city, I assume?
No, the city pays for it, but it's a one-time cost. And sometimes the county pitches in and community organizations, nonprofits, but it is a real one-time cost, because you can't skip educating the voters. You just can't.
Okay, thank you. I get it. So, only the vote of candidates who are to be eliminated will be spread amongst other candidates. Get it now. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Jimenez.
Yeah, thank you so much for the presentation and bringing this issue also here, Mayor. I have four questions. One is, we saw there is a little, like, confusion around how this system works. And so, my question to you is, there will be, there will be a need for education for voters. Are there resources that Richmond and the county could use to do that voter education, and do you know what Albany did? Like, because they just passed also this.
Marcela, do you want to take that one, or do you want me to take it?
You can go ahead and take it.
Okay. Yes, there are lots of resources. New York City, I think they did their education in some insane number of languages. I think it might have been 40. I'm not sure. And the person who ran that actually happens to live in Oakland. So, that's a resource. Albany used a great group called Democracy Rising, who does this all over the country. They came in and they did a wonderful job. In other cities, the county and the city, the city clerk usually leads the education effort, that the city clerk's office usually leads that. But partnering with community organizations that are trusted, know how to reach their community members, that's the way to go. That's the way you really reach people. And so, there are a ton of resources to help, to help cities with this. Because city clerks frankly have not, they weren't, this stuff didn't exist when most were in college and training for this stuff and have never been trained on it. So, there's all kinds of resources available for city clerks on how to educate on ranked choice voting.
And if I, if I just may add to that as well, I know in New York City, in 2020, when they were doing the educational outreach, they partnered up with Starbucks Meals on Wheels when they were handing out meals to the elderly population. They were sticking in cards inside the bags, you know, telling people how to vote. And so, it ranges from, you know, partnering up with organizations like Meals on Wheels to more local issue-based organizations, along with the work that the city clerk office is doing. And as Jim mentioned, Democracy Rising is a great resource, and there's several other organizations similar to Democracy Rising that would partner up. And so, when the time comes, we would count RCV as a resource for that, and we would offer those organizations up to you and partner up with them as well.
Okay, my second question, thank you. I understand that if the city decided to put this, the instant runoff voting on the ballot as a ballot measure, it will consider as a competing measure with the measure that is, has already, is going to be on the ballot. But they can, they can both become a law. So, can you explain a little bit more about that?
Sure. So, this actually happens in a lot of elections like this, where there are two competing measures on the ballot. And so, state law is if they both pass, whichever one has the most votes becomes law. So, in this particular case, if RERA passed but IRV didn't, RERA would become law. If IRV passed and RERA didn't pass, IRV would become law. If they both pass, whichever one has the most votes becomes law.
Okay, thank you. And can you say a little bit more about ranked choice voting rewards for people who run positive campaigning instead of negative campaign and what happened in these two instances?
Sure. So, campaigns are not negative because candidates and campaign managers are bad people. Campaigns are negative because that's the way you win under the current system, and people need to win. They're not running to lose, they're running to win. So, there's a lot of benefit to negative, without ranked choice voting, it's cheap and easy to run a negative campaign, and you take votes away from your opponent, and that's like getting a vote. So, the only way to stop negative campaigning is change the incentives. And so, with ranked choice voting, you need number-two and number-three votes to win most of the time. Sometimes people win outright, but usually they don't. Usually, somebody is ahead, and whoever's ahead after they count the number-one votes does win 85% of the time in the United States. However, if they don't get very many number-two and number-three votes, they won't win. So, imagine you're, you're, you're running, and you're knocking on doors and talking to voters, and as you're, as you're walking down the street, you see a sign for an opponent. In the old days, you would have skipped that house, but why are you going to waste your time, right? Now, you go knock on the door, and you say, hi, I'd like to, I see you're supporting so-and-so, but I'd like to ask for your number-two vote. And if you're attacking that person that other people like, you're not going to get their number-two vote. It doesn't pay, it doesn't pay. It just does, it's, which, which is why candidates also need, and campaign managers also need some training on using ranked choice voting the first time, because it, it really changes the way you campaign. You're making coalitions with people. In Albany, the group I was working with, we ran three people for two positions. What the heck? Right? You can do that, though, with ranked choice voting. And the person that ran was, the third person was an Asian-American we hadn't had, we'd had one in our history, right? Wouldn't have run if it hadn't been for ranked choice voting, but there was space for him, and he ran and he won. Right? And so, the power of this sort of thing, where three people can run and say, please vote for me, number-one, but vote for number-two and three for my, you know, for us, it's incredibly powerful.
Thank you. And my last question is, do they use this system in other countries?
Oh, yes. Australia and Ireland have been using it for over 100 years. Malta uses it. Malta's a pretty small country. But Australia and Ireland are not, and they've been using it for over 100 years in the whole countries and are quite happy with it.
Yeah, thank you. I will have more remarks, but I will let other people to speak. Thank you.
Councilmember Sepeda?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. Couple of questions. It was mentioned that more people vote under this, that there was some evidence that more people vote. What triggers people to vote more? I'm very, that I'm very interested in. We want to always activate more people to vote. What makes this special, more than others, to say, I'm going to vote more?
Well, one thing is if you compare it to running in the, just more people vote in a general election than vote in a primary. So, when ranked choice voting advocates say that, that's part of the equation. Right? But the second thing is that there's going to be more candidates that you're interested in. For instance, in Albany, right, just because I live there, the, that candidate brought out AAPI voters, right? And he was pretty young, so he brought out young voters. You have more candidates running, more attractive candidates running, and so people are more excited to come out and vote for them. Right? And the barriers to, to women running and the barriers to candidates of color are lowered. So, then, there's a candidate that looks like me that's running. If I, if I'm a young black woman or something, there's a good chance there's going to be a candidate that looks like me that's running, and that's pretty attractive. So, that brings voters out, and just, just the fact that you have more choice and more choice, and it's, it's more pleasant, actually, to vote under ranked choice voting, because, at least in my experience, in my opinion, because what happens is that, in the old days, before I voted with ranked choice voting, I had to decide, am I going to bullet vote? Just vote for one person? And who do I vote for and who do I leave off? And now, I can just vote my true, you know, how I feel. But, you know, I can just vote, this is my favorite person, number-one, this person's number-two, this person is number-three. I don't have to worry about splitting the vote. I don't have to worry about any nonsense. I just vote how I feel. And that's just kind of like a relief.
Thank you. Now, in Richmond, I don't think we've ever had a nasty campaign. But what we have had, for sure, is a tie.
Yes.
Right?
Heard about that, yeah.
It was fun. So, in the case of a tie, do we, is, are we, do you need the bag back? Is she going to pull the name out of a bag again? Like, how do we break a tie, or do we go with both at that time? Yeah, but if, but if both ballot measures, so I'm looking at both ballot measures, if, and sorry, I wasn't clear there, so if both ballot measures that are going to be in the November ballot?
Yes.
If they both win and they have identical votes?
Oh, my goodness.
Because that happened with my election.
I, I know.
It's doable, all right? It's doable. I've seen it. So, if that happens, do we now get both of them? So, we have a runoff and this, and...
No, state law applies at that point, and state law is, it's, it's, it's drawn from a hat, yeah.
Okay, so you'll leave the bag back. It's in my office.
That's why, that's why it was done with you?
Yeah. Out of a bag.
Yeah, state law determined it. It wasn't the city clerk's call. It was state law.
Perfect, thank you. The other is, is the county ready for this? Would the county be ready? I don't know, we've talked to them, and I don't know, I know we would probably be the first city to do this. Would the county be ready? Do they need more staff, more funding? What does that look like to the county? What does that look like to the county?
So the county is ready because the system that y'all use, Dominion, supports ranked choice voting. That's what all the Bay Area cities use already. So all they have to do is flip a switch. However, it's probably not part of the county contract. So the county will have, so, this is really getting a little bit into the weeds, but I know that council's very interested in cost, as they should be. Dominion won't give, uh, won't give you a quote. They'll only talk to the county because the county is their client. And the county needs you to like, ask them for a serious, um, estimate. So that they don't just give you numbers picked out of air. So you have to ask them for a very serious estimate, a very careful estimate. And then they'll go to Dominion and say, how much will it cost us, right? And then Dominion comes back with a number. And that's, they, they won't, they, they just won't give anybody but a county a quote.
Thank you. And then my last one here. This would only apply to city council. So just a section of the ballot will be ranked choice and then everybody else will be the same. So it's not gonna be affecting our county supervisor's race or any other race that might be on that, on that particular ballot.
You, you couldn't do the county supervisor. But y'all have control over your city elections. So you could put, uh, it's up, that, that's your choice as council. That's a policy question as to what you want it to apply to. I don't know if the school board is part of your charter or not. Uh, if it is part of, if it's not part of your charter, okay, I'm seeing heads shake. So it couldn't apply to school board, it's not part of your charter. And I don't think you have any executive offices that you elect, is that correct? Okay? So then it would just be just for council, yes?
Okay. Perfect, thank you. No other questions at this time. Thank you.
Councilmember McLaughlin and then Councilmember Willis.
Yeah, I just want, I just want to thank you for the presentation. I've been a supporter of IRV for a long time, going back, I think, to 2002 and, um, have always supported it for the reasons that you talk about. And it certainly would be so much less costly than having a primary and a general, as well as the reasons you mentioned in the, um, presentation. More choices, more voices, better and more equitable outcomes and discourages, uh, negative campaigning. So, um, I'm really thankful that the mayor brought this item forward and I just wanted to just put out a quick comment of support.
Councilmember Willis?
Yeah, uh, sorry for being late, but I was listening to the presentation on YouTube while I was driving over here. I guess my, the thing that I wasn't quite clear on, on ranked choice voting is, um, I guess my question is if ten people are running for three positions, do you get to rank them one for ten? Or do you have to wait, rank them one through three from the amount of positions that are running? That's the only thing that was usually confused on, on how ranked choice worked.
So Dominion's, uh, equipment will allow up to ten rankings.
Okay. Okay, what if there's twelve candidates now that you said that?
You'll only get ten rankings. So, so we're restricted by what Dominion can do. But ten is a lot. There was a study done, um, uh, in Cambridge, uh, where they used this system. And it showed that if people ranked even five people and they elect all nine council members at once every single time, like every two years, my goodness. Poor council members, they're running all the time. Uh, but anyway, um, if they elect five, I mean, if they, if a voter selects five people, ninety percent of their time, their vote got counted. Five is, you're, almost for sure, you're gonna get somebody, right?
No.
So, but, um, but you can write in the charter, you can say, um, you know, to the extent that the equipment allows, we want voters to be able to rank every candidate.
Okay.
And we recommend that kind of language, actually.
No, thank you, because that was the only thing that confused me about ranked choice voting. It's just how many folks do I get to rank at a time, man? Just to let you know, I know you said that's a lot of candidates, but when Caesar and I first ran and, uh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Sepeda. Uh, when we first ran, when we first ran in 2016, there was actually nine candidates that was running at the same time. So it's definitely not impossible. But no, I do appreciate that answer and that, um, extra bit of clarity for, uh, ranked choice voting. Thank you.
So may, uh, we'll go to public speakers?
Okay.
Does Councilmember Robinson have any questions? If not, uh, we'll go on to public speakers. And if so, you can also wait till after public speakers.
I'm, I'm fine, I don't have questions at this time.
Thank you.
We have three in-person speakers. Speakers are Diana Ware, Sue Wilson, and Jamin Purcell. Please come forward, you have two minutes.
Thank you. My name is Diana Ware and I'm a Richmond resident. I appreciate that the city council, uh, invited this presentation from the California Ranked Choice Voting, uh, Group and for taking a look at this really important issue. I support ranked choice voting or instant runoff voting. And I know that Richmond already has a system like most, like ninety-six percent of cities in California that had that single election and the highest vote winner, um, gets the race. But I recognize that ranked chose, voted, voting is better. And it ensures that whoever is elected to office will get the support of the majority of voters. So people feel truly represented. That's important for us in Richmond too. And I also know that there's another, a different measure on the ballot in November that wants to create a separate primary for city races. And I appreciate that the points have been, uh, drawn tonight. And I don't support that. Because two elections, a primary and the November one, means that candidates backed by a lot of money will be able to run two races. So that limits who can run for city office. We also know that many people don't vote in primaries, don't even know that there's a primary election. And primarily, low-income people of color and youth, um, are disenfranchised from that election. We don't want them cut out from those voting choices. So ranked choi, chose, ranked choice voting or instant runoff voting is a better solution because we will always end up with someone who wins the majority of votes. I hope you'll agree that ranked choice voting, that is instant runoff voting, is a more democratic approach. Thank you.
Sue Wilson?
Hi, I'm Sue Wilson, I live in the Richmond Annex. I want to thank the city council for learning more and teaching us all more about ranked choice or instant runoff voting. One thing I've learned in recent years is that elections are not simple. There are many different ways that different communities choose the people that lead them and it turns out none of them are perfect. That said, some are better than others. Some have more advantages, some have more disadvantages. And so in the spirit of ranked choice voting, I'm gonna rank a couple of voting systems the way that I see it after doing some research on this. I would give our current system, the plurality voting, it would get my second choice. It would be my sec, my, I'd rank it number two. It's a good system, it's fair, it's familiar, most cities use it, people know how to do it. But it has a drawback, which is that when you have more than two candidates, the person who wins oftentimes does not have more than fifty percent of the support. That's not a scam, that's just how plurality voting works. Whoever gets the most wins, even if it's not more than fifty. But that's a drawback, it's really a disadvantage of our current system. That's why I rank number one, ranked choice voting or instant runoff voting. It actually gives you the best of both worlds. You end up with a winner who has more than fifty percent support, always, that is always what the winner has. And you do it in one single election that takes place in November. You don't need to split it up between a primary and a runoff and a general and so forth. Turns out that's important. Bringing me to my last choice. My last choice voting system would be the one that's currently on the ballot for November, the so-called Richmond Election Reform Act. It is not a reform, it's a step backwards because by creating a primary, you are creating a problem. We all know that most people, I should say, many people who vote in November do not vote in the primaries. It's like one-third less people, that's ten thousand people in Richmond. So if we were to create a new primary for city races, we would be saying to ten thousand people,
Your time has expired, so.
We don't think you should have a voice. Thank you.
Our last speaker in person is Jamin Purcell.
So I am a fan of ranked choice voting over the plurality of voting because the biggest thing that it engenders is buy-in from the voters. That is the thing that we are facing on a national level is that people don't feel like they are getting representatives that actually represent them. That they are getting, and what we end up with is called a doom loop, where you have those who are considered most viable, those are most electable, keep ending up in office. Ranked choice voting allows, and therefore then people don't vote. We saw that in the primary, we've seen that in many of our elections and perhaps how some people got elected like Trump. I would say that ranked choice voting is about not going for the polarization within politics. We have had horrifically nasty, uh, campaigns run against candidates who have smeared them and lied against, and lied about them, whether it's been done by other candidates or by other organizations. And I think that with ranked choice voting, it actually lends to civility within polit, uh, politics once more. It means that people don't need to be polarized in order to be able to pull a vote. They actually need to be collaborative. They need to be able to build a coalition and understand the issues broadly. And they can't be single-issue or polarized candidates. And I would like to speak to the other proposition, or the other measure that's going forward. The bigger issue that I see with it is that, and this was not mentioned, was that when you have, um, one of the parts of it is that if you have fifty percent of the vote in the primary, you do not go to the general. Which, which means that that smaller number of voters is actually going to be able to make the decision for district elections and be able to choose when, including the voice of the full, uh, city that would be more engaged in a general election. And I think that's very problematic. So it's more votes and more engagement is always gonna be better. Please, ranked choice voting.
And that was our last in-person speaker. Now we'll go to the speakers that are online.
I have two speakers, I have Sol and Yozra Abdalasis. Sol, you'll have two minutes to speak, you can go ahead and start. Sol, if you couldn't mute yourself, you have two minutes to speak, you can go ahead and start.
Hello? Hello? Yes. Okay, can you hear me? Yes, go ahead. Okay, sorry about that. Hi, my name is Maris Hokanthu, I'm a third-generation Richmond resident, a District Six resident. And I'm really, really excited to see that we're, the city and city council is looking at, uh, election reform. I think it's long overdue. And I'm really excited to see that there is a discussion of ranked choice or instant runoff voting on the agenda tonight. I know that this may be new to many people. It, I've only heard of it once or twice before. But the presentation and the video were super easy to follow. And, um, I really also appreciated how, um, I was able to learn in almost thirty seconds how it worked, which is really, really great. And I think, um, there is, one of the great things about instant runoff voting is that it gives the city a lot of advantages about holding runoff elections. So if we don't have, oh, what happened? Am I? Oh, okay. And, um, I really like that whoever wins will hopefully have fifty percent of her, you know, pop, of majority and that happens. But if they don't, I really, truly believe that instant runoff voting, um, it can happen instantly and at the same time of the general election. So we don't have the additional cost or the worry about primary elections as well. And so I'm really, really excited that, um, this goes to the ballot in November and that, um, we do not create another primary. We know that it would, it's a racial justice issue, it's a social justice issue, it's a voting rights issue, um, because a lot of people do not vote in the primaries. And so for me, this is really a social and racial justice issue at the helm and so I appreciate city council bringing this. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Yozra Abdalasis. You'll have two minutes to speak, you can go ahead and start.
Hi, um, hi, I'm calling about, this is the city of Richmond call for, um, there's an agenda item G1, is that correct?
No, we're on G2 right now, but it's the next item, so you can speak then.
Okay, I will speak then. Thank you.
And there are no more public speakers.
Public comment is closed. There's one item that, that, that wasn't mentioned and that is that most elections, most elected hate election time. Because election time, uh, takes up your energy and it takes it away from what you were elected for, which is to represent the people. So the issue that I have with the Richmond Election Reform Act is that it extends the election time so that there's more time that you're not dedicating a hundred percent of your time to representing the people and doing the work of the city. Instead, you're, uh, putting a lot of your energy into elections, which, uh, which is, which is a sad thing. So, uh, would, uh, Councilmember Robinson want to make any comments? If not, then I will let Vice Mayor, um,
Just a quick, just a quick comment.
Go ahead.
I was, I also wanted to just thank everyone for the presentation tonight. The video was, like, was mentioned, it's really easy to understand. We should definitely use that in outreach campaigns if this moves forward. I would say that, you know, when I think about this, from what I've learned tonight, it really does seem like, especially with our district elections, that this might be a way we can have more representative, representation from regular, you know, residents who are passionate about their cities, passionate about their districts and who want to, you know, serve the city. The lower barrier to entry, less cost to be a part of an election or to be able to run a campaign, being able to be a part of a coalition, all of these things just seem like they're gonna lead to a lot more active democracy in the city. So I really appreciate this being brought forward and, um, thank you, everyone.
Thank you. After Vice Mayor, uh, Pemenis, I will call the question.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to say that, um, thank you, uh, Mayor Martinez for bringing this, uh, item and have the discussion. I think what we as council want is to expand the opportunity for people to either run for city council and to vote and have their vote count. And, uh, and what we don't want is to have an election reform like RIRA that is going to disenfranchise over ten thousand people or more. And that the decisions about who represents an entire, uh, set of, like, uh, entire city or an entire district is, 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 is done by few. And particularly, uh, those who, uh, don't look like me. We know that, uh, our communities, especially black and brown communities, don't vote as we should in primaries. So adding a primary will disenfranchise, uh, many of us, uh, many people. And so probably this council will change the complexity, uh, because of that. So I think this is, uh, this is a better option. I, I don't think our, our system, as it is, has problems, but I am hearing, uh, the community that wants some change, uh, and do some reform. So it's better to have, uh, an option that is really tested, that is working, that, uh, instead of disenfranchised borders, are, are going to make it more, um, accessible. So I think it's, it's good to put this on the ballot. So it's, it's just one option that it really enfranchise communities of color, everybody in the city, uh, plus others that actually is disenfranchising, uh, communities. So thank you, Mayor, for bringing this up and I am full support of it. Thank you.
Roll call?
I'll second it.
You know, uh,
Do we have a motion?
I'll, I'll move item G2.
I second.
All right, now.
And the second is?
You know, can I, can I just clarify?
You know, can I, can I just clarify on the recommended action, just for point of clarification? No, I think proposal would be, just to clarify, to direct the city attorney's office to prepare a proposed charter amendment for an IRV ballot measure to allow the city council, I was just writing it here, to allow the city council to place the IRV ballot measure language on the 2024 general election ballot. The proposed recommended action addressed, spoken.
Uh-oh, your mic went out.
We just need to be clear that we are drafting a charter amendment to be placed on the 2024 ballot.
Thank you so much.
Yes.
And I thank the council for slowing me down. Okay, now.
We're ready? Okay, so we have a motion by Councilmember Willis, a second by Councilmember McGoughlin, Councilmember Bana.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jimenez.
Yes.
Councilmember McGoughlin.
Yes.
Councilmember Robinson.
Yes.
Councilmember Willis.
Yes.
Councilmembers Zapata.
Yes.
And Mayor Martinez.
Yes.
The vote is unanimous.
Thank you. Now, we can move on to the last item.
We're moving on to item G1, and that is to direct city staff to review and modify the City of Richmond's investment policy, eliminating the investment of city funds into industries that facilitate violence, war, oppression, and apartheid. If there's anyone that's joining us online, if you would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand at this time.
I'd like to start off by saying that we all have a conscience. For some of us, that conscience is activated right away. For the rest of us, it takes time to catch up. I want to honor those who have been resisting this genocide for over 29 weeks in Gaza and around the world.
Yes.
So, so many young people have put their lives, their bodies, livelihoods on the line to voice their resistance to what's happening. I want to name that this item was inspired by Aaron Bushnell and an unidentified woman, both of whom felt so horrified by this genocide and so powerless that they gave their lives to bring attention to what's happening to the people in Palestine. With an activated conscience, we act with the tools available to us. Just as we see that the consciousness of the students at Columbia University has sparked consciousness in students all over the world, we also, as a city, have tools available to us to act on our conscience. I believe, I still believe, that we do not hear enough firsthand accounts of what's happening in Gaza. So I want to begin by reading several brief accounts of American, Canadian, and British doctors that have been working in Gaza over the past few months. This account is from an American doctor, Dr. Galarria. She says, "I began working immediately upon arriving in Gaza, performing 10 to 12 surgeries a day, working 14 to 16 hours at a time. The operating room would often shake from the incessant bombing, sometimes as frequently as every 30 seconds. We operated in unsterile settings that would have been unthinkable in the United States. We had limited access to critical medical equipment. We performed amputations of arms and legs daily using a jiglig saw, a Civil War-era tool, essentially a segment of barbed wire. I stopped keeping track of how many new orphans I had operated on. After surgery, they would be filed somewhere in the hospital. I'm unsure of who will take care of them or how they will survive. On one occasion, a handful of children, all about ages five to eight, were carried to the emergency room by their parents. All had singular sniper shots to the head. These families were returning to their homes in Khan Yugus, about 2.5 miles away from the hospital after Israeli tanks had withdrawn. But the snipers apparently stayed behind. None of these children survived." The next account is from a Canadian ophthalmologist, Dr. Khan. "I treated all children when I was first, when I was there the first time. It was kids that were aged two, six, nine, 10, 13, 15, 16, and 17. Those were the ones that I treated, and their eyes unfortunately had to be removed. They had shrapnel in their eye sockets that I had to remove, and of course, remove the eye. There's many patients, many children who had shrapnel in both their eyes. There's no equipment available to take shrapnel that's in the eye out, and so we just leave them alone, and they eventually go blind. And so I saw these facial injuries. I saw limbs of children just kind of hanging off, barely connected. I saw abdominal wounds where you had, of course, the intestines exposed. And the thing is that the emergency does not have room, so they're all over the floor. So you have these massive trauma, and the patients are on the floor, and sometimes they get forgotten in the mass chaos." The final doctor's account is from British Palestinian surgeon, Dr. Abu Sitat. "Toward the end of my 43 days in Gaza, we had run out of anesthetic, and we were doing procedures with no anesthetic at all. We were having to do extremely painful cleaning procedures to stop wound infections on children with no anesthetic and no analgesics. In the absence of appropriate medical supplies, Abu Sitat concocted a solution to fight infection: dish soap mixed with vinegar and saline. I would pour a solution of dish soap mixed with vinegar and saline over the wounds and scrub the wound down. It was probably the darkest moment in my life. The child was screaming, the parents were crying, and you're just trying to block out all of this and do it as quickly as possible, but knowing that if you hadn't, the child would be dead by the end of the day. The moral urgency of this moment cannot be overstated. I could go on sharing accounts of famine in Palestinian families eating grass to survive, more children suffering, and more parents losing their children, but instead I'll say, I do not think our city should profit in any way from companies who facilitate this kind of massive violence and ethnic cleansing." And this is not only in Gaza, but it's anywhere else in the world. We need to do ethical investing. We need to be socially conscious in how we spend our money, where our money goes to. We need to make sure that the people we deal with have responsible investment instruments in which our monies can be used to build society, not destroy it. We have, we have a presentation that will show that Richmond has a history of being socially conscious when it comes to how our money is spent. So if we can begin that presentation.
Is this thing on? Okay. Sorry, I'm just getting situated here. Good evening, Mayor, members of city council, and the Richmond community. I'm nervous, sorry. So this policy I drafted under the request of the mayor, who I'm, Shiva Mishik is chief of staff, and I am so grateful that we had Councilmember Gail McGoughlin and Councilmember Sohe LaBana also give so much valuable input into shaping this policy. It really felt like a collaborative effort. I also want to, before I begin, thank city staff for their input, guidance, and time. I really feel like the finance manager, the deputy city manager, and our present city attorney, they're so busy, but they still made time to provide answers and clarity. City manager, you've really assembled a great team. There are some really brilliant women running our city right now. This policy, at its core, is about the international war and captivity economy and who profits from it. So if we could go to the first slide, please, which is precedents in current context, or sorry, second slide. Next slide, perfect, thank you. So Richmond has a rich history of engaging with international issues. It was really interesting to look at the archives from 1985 to 1994, where city council minutes, resolutions, ordinances are present, talking about the South African apartheid system and advocating for divesting from it. And these are the three pieces of, so just for everyone's reference, when you see the dash, so resolution number 17-85, that dash 85 is the year that that was passed. So in 1985, city council passed a resolution supporting the abolition of apartheid in South Africa, and then the resolution establishing anti-apartheid business practices and investment policies, and then this was turned into an ordinance where it became the fiscal investment policy of the city. And I just want to read a little bit of language from that, where in the ordinance, which was passed in 86, it says, "Whereas the City of Richmond declares the right to measure the moral character of its business partners in determining with whom it seeks to have business relations, and whereas the system of apartheid in South Africa is morally repugnant to the citizens of Richmond." And I think that this is something that we can be proud of, you know, 40 years later now, almost. Next slide, please. I do want to point out, however, that in this same period, we see anti-Palestinian racism also in our Richmond history. So in 1987, apparently, according to this text, the city council, almost the same city council that spent about nine years focusing on South African apartheid, acknowledged in this resolution that citizens of Richmond wanted the Human Rights Commission to focus on Israeli oppression and human rights abuses. The council said, "No, we aren't interested in international rights issues." So this was in a year period of passing an ordinance about South African apartheid. So there has been a particular denial, enrichment of what has gone on in Palestinian territories. Next slide, please. However, even now, we do have policies that indicate that we are a city that stands against oppression and violence, particularly state violence. We have our Health and All Policies ordinance, which really prioritizes the well-being of Richmond residents. We have a very strong sanctuary city policy, and in that policy are investment restrictions, which I'll get to. We've focused a lot, we have a pretty groundbreaking approach to community safety in this city and recognizing that there's more ways to reach safety besides using a gun. We have a status as being a human rights city, and if you look at, for our Human Rights Commission, the purpose of it, it says, "The City of Richmond values the dignity and worth of all human beings and is committed to promoting human rights, justice, equity, and an inclusive and peaceful environment." So I just wanted to provide the framework for this. This is not by any means new to the City of Richmond to consider thinking about how international issues and human rights issues come to bear on how our city lives and interacts with each other. Next slide, please. I wanted to get a little bit in, a little bit into the mechanics of how our investments work. I'm sure that staff will graciously correct me if I completely butcher this. So, you know, we have, the first question we got in crafting this policy is, can we do what Hayward did? The answer is no, not exactly. So the way we have, council sees this, every month we get, or council receives an investment report from the finance department, and so on your screens now is one that was received by council in March. And so the places where you can see on the screen that we do indirective investments, which I'll get to, are under local agency investment funds and Cal Trust. So Hayward, for instance, does direct investments. They actually buy, they have a portfolio where they actually buy corporate bonds and so on. Ours works a little bit differently, and I'll explain how that works in a moment. But what I want to draw your attention to and what we'll be focusing on is the first row, which is local agency investment funds. I'll refer to it as LEAF, where we have approximately $24 million invested right now. And so just to give a little bit of context, the local agency investment fund, sorry, I should have said this earlier, I don't like reading from notes when I present, but I feel like this is a topic I have to get right, so I'm going to be doing a lot more reading during this presentation. No room for error with Palestine issues. The local agency investment fund is a state program, and it's an investment alternative for California's local governments and special districts. So this program offers local agencies the opportunity to participate in a major portfolio. So basically, we can think of this as a big pool of money. Next slide, please. So this is just an overview of LEAF. So as you can see, there are all these different types of entities that invest in the state fund, special districts, school districts, bonds, counties, and cities. So currently, we are one of 475 cities that invest in LEAF. And so what LEAF does, and LEAF is overseen by a board, is they invest their funds in a PMIA. And so if you look over a little bit to your right, to the PMIA portfolio composition, the way this roughly works is that all of these district cities, counties, you see, put their money into this pool that's then taken to the PMIA, and it's invested through these different mechanisms, so treasuries, agencies, certificate of deposits, time deposits, et cetera, et cetera. So to put it simply, we take our money, we give it to LEAF, a bunch of other cities also take their money, give it to LEAF, it's all pooled together, and then it's invested in different types of investments. And here's, this is a chart provided by LEAF. The green line, or I'm sorry, the blue line is how LEAF or PMIA performs relative to the S and P and Fed funds, so just for your references to the type of return we get from LEAF. Next slide, please. So what's at interest for us today is that slice commercial paper and corporate bonds. So those are the things where we are most So those are the things where we are most explicitly interacting with corporations. So again, to put it crudely, commercial paper is when a corporation basically needs a short-term loan for their operations, so for instance, payroll, et cetera. And then corporate bonds are more like what we think of as stocks. So almost seven percent of this fund is what we're going to be talking about today. Next slide, please. This is going to become relevant, I'm just putting it up right now. These are the companies that LEAF says we are allowed to invest in these companies as of right now. So that doesn't mean that necessarily we own, or that LEAF or PMIA has commercial paper or corporate bonds in these corporations, but it means they are allowed, they're up for grabs. So it could be that today, they have investments in 3M, Caterpillar, Microsoft, but then two months from now, it's Microsoft, Citigroup, and Caterpillar. But that doesn't mean they're all held up all at once. So the one on the left is for corporate bonds, the one on the right is for commercial paper. And I'll return to this list. Next slide, please. I want to, the guiding question that, the guiding question for this policy was not, should this service or product exist? I think that reasonable people can disagree on whether, for instance, you know, bail bonds are useful, or whether militaries should exist, or to what extent the prison system should be what it is. Reasonable people can disagree on the variation of those things. The question behind this policy is, should the city profit from this product or service? And so that's the approach that was taken, is, you know, not to debate, do we believe that prisons should exist, but is that where we want to get our money from? Is mass incarceration or weapons? Next slide, please. I'm going to start with, I'm actually going to do this a little bit backwards, I'm going to start with restriction two, so that I can then later on get more in-depth into the companies enumerated in restriction one. So the first restriction that we're proposing is that it is the city's policy not to invest in companies and their subsidiaries involved in the development and manufacturing of arms and weapons. So this would be your defense contractors, so all forms of munitions, that means anywhere from bombs to bullets, that sort of thing. So to put it very basically, and depending on the definition, you use different types of projectiles, artillery systems, fighter jets, attack helicopters, warplanes, and warships. Turns out, as you go on in history, there's more types of weapons to add to the list. Firearms and accessories, so scopes and sights, military robots, those exist, missiles, military and commercial drones, we felt was important to include because we are seeing a move away from fighter jets to very cheap drones. So for instance, when Azerbaijan invaded Armenia, they were able to defeat, I mean, Nagorno-Karabakh using very cheap drone systems. And a lot of times, these are commercial drones that we would use to fly around and take photos that can be easily weaponized. So software that supports drones and missile systems, tactical body gear and body armor, tactical military and armored vehicles, and tank transporters. Again, this is not to say, for instance, that tactical body gear shouldn't exist, right? Again, reasonable people can disagree, or agree or disagree on that. Our police department, of course, uses and often needs tactical body gear, right? It's do we want to profit in companies that make that their main product or service? That's sort of the question. Next slide, please. I'm just going to provide some example companies. I know that that wasn't, that's not what being proposed for these three restrictions that are coming, but example companies would fall, for instance, Northrop Grumman, which is one of the world's largest military companies. They provide drones and radars to monitor the US border, develop databases and systems for homeland security, and monitor immigrant communities. Or Raytheon probably needs no explanation, they're known as RTX now. Next slide. I do, however, want to give a special shout-out to Lockheed Martin. Lockheed Martin has been the world's largest military contractor since 2009. It was one of the top contractors for US Customs and Border Protection, and they also are implicated in dozens of war crimes against Palestinian civilians, resulting in numerous casualties, as well as mass destructions of homes and civilian infrastructure, including hospitals, schools, water, and electric systems. They have been the central military and arms servicer for 2022's Operation Breaking Dawn, which was where thirty-three Palestinian civilians were killed, Operation Guardian of the Walls, where 261 Palestinians were killed, including sixty-seven children, Operation Protective Edge in 2014, Operation Pillar Defense, and Operation Cast Lead. They produce the F-16 and F-35 warplane, which they supply to the Israeli Air Force, as well as Hellfire missiles and multiple launch rocket systems. They also engage in surveillance of the US-Mexico border, it's one of the main contractors of the US Customs and Border Protection. In addition to providing customs and border protection with aircraft, it provides the agency with data processing for T E C S, which is the principal system used at the border to screen and help whether, decide whether people should be even allowed into the United States. So just, you know, one example of what a defense contractor does. Another is Elbit Systems, which makes killer drones, large weapons systems, and ammunition used against citizens. So that covers the spirit of restriction to the arms industry. Next slide, please. The next restriction we are proposing is, it is the city's policy not to invest in companies and their subsidiaries that are involved in the border and mass surveillance industries. Now, we do have a sanctuary policy city, I'm sorry, sanctuary city policy that we passed in 2018. And I'll note that, that part of it were restrictions on, so it most comes up in the contracting that the city does, you know, making sure that vendors we do business with don't do business with ICE. But there is also an investment portion where it says, the city of Richmond shall not make any investment in stocks, bonds, securities, or other obligations issued by any provider of data broker or extreme vetting services to ICE. So this is a restriction that would add on to it and kind of strengthen that restriction. But as we'll see, I, I would argue that some of the companies that LEAF invests in now is actually not following this policy that we already have on the books, which I'll return to. But we're proposing that we add not investing in companies that facilitate further border construction and maintenance, border monitoring and surveillance, and cargo, basically cargo and air flights that help deport people. I also want to note that there is a high degree of overlap between companies who provide the above products for migrant detention, and companies who are considered part of the prison industry. That's because the business model, and more importantly, the approach is the same between how our society houses migrants and how it incarcerates prisoners. Next slide, please. So Wells Fargo is an example company. It has been one of the main financial backers of private prisons and immigrant detention companies. IBM, which we'll be talking about a lot today, it's one of the world's largest IT companies, it's a major contractor for the US immigration authorities. I will be returning to IBM, but I do want to speak to it a little bit here. It has provided technologies to help US Immigration and Customs Enforcement make deportations decisions. So they developed ICE's Automated Threat Prioritization System. This system, for which IBM received 22.5 million, was designed to automate ICE's decision-making processes. It collects information about immigrants from federal, state, and local law enforcement to identify for ICE on who to report. It has also been identified as one of the leading contractors for US Customs and Border Protection. Next slide, please. Another example would be Granite Construction, which is a US construction company that has constructed parts of or performed maintenance on the US-Mexico border. Again, if one believes a wall should exist, it would stand to reason that someone would build it. The question then becomes, do we want to profit from a company that primarily has contracts building the US-Mexico wall? And then Palantir, you know them, you love them, they design systems for US immigration authorities to surveil and target immigrants and to manage mass immigration rates. Its predictive policing tools are used by some law enforcement agencies. Next slide, please. The fourth restriction that's being posed is, it's the city's policy not to invest in companies and their subsidiaries that are involved in the mass incarceration and detention industries, nor those companies that use prison labor to manufacture products. The prison industry in the United States is massive and growing. Since 1970, the number of incarcerated people in the US has increased by 700%, to the point that the US prison population is the largest in the world, both per capita and in total numbers. As of 2019, there are an estimated 2.3 million people behind bars. The most visible and publicly debated corporate involvement in the prison industry is through private prisons, i.e. prisons that are owned, managed, or operated by private for-profit prisons. However, private prisons are just the tip of the iceberg for prison profiteering. Whether public or private, all prisons, jails, and immigration detention centers rely on for-profit companies for their operations, as nearly every aspect of the prison industry has been privatized to a certain degree. So therefore, the sorts of companies that we are proposing this investment covers fall under these different categories. So incarceration and detention facilities, facility management, youth and family detention, and private facilities internationally. Then there's private prison financing, transportation, and deportations, prison labor, and then what I'll be speaking to as well, services and facilities, communication services, food, commissary and other goods, health services, incarcerate, and then incarceration, bail bonds, community corrections. Next slide, please. So Acadia is a healthcare company, and it provides healthcare to incarcerated people, which sounds fine, but I'll just quote, "Acadia has participated in the jailing of unaccompanied immigrant children." The government, it assists the Office of Refugee Resettlement in detaining and forcibly separating immigrant youth. And in some of the facilities they run that held immigrant children, they have faced numerous allegations of sexual harassment and physical abuse. Their facilities also face allegations of mistreatment and are reportedly called a misery mill due to rampant violence. They have been sued multiple times for negligence that resulted on youth-on-youth sexual assault. The issue here is that although these companies may provide a service that incarcerated people need, I think, I would certainly argue that incarcerated people deserve healthcare, of course. The issue is that because so many of these providers have a profit incentive to cut corners, and because it is a pervasive attitude in our society that if you're in prison, you don't deserve services, there are so many abuses that occur by these for-profit companies with no oversight. So again, on paper, Acadia is a healthcare company, and it is rife with abuse. Aramark is another one, I just want to read one. Aramark is a provider of food services, facility management services, and uniforms. So they actually, in Alameda County, we faced an issue with Aramark. Aramark has a long history of providing substandard food in prisons. The company reduces quantities and has been repeatedly accused of severe health and safety violations, sanitation violations, unauthorized food substitutions, undercooked food and food shortages. In Alameda County Santa Rita Jail, they were sued for serving expired and spoiled food, as well as food invested with rodent, insect, and bird droppings. They also use prison labor to prepare and package food in some prisons. They have also provide, they also provide services to ICE, Customs, and Border Protection, and the Federal Bureau of Prisons. Next slide, please. Then of course, there's CoreCivic and GEO Group. So I am, with these restrictions, attempting to provide a sampling of what sorts of companies would fall under these restrictions, and why they would fall under them. Next slide, please. Berkshire Hathaway and JP Morgan Chase also heavily participate in the incarceration industry. Berkshire Hathaway's subsidiary Shaw Industries uses prison labor. JP Morgan Chase, it's a main financier of private prison and immigrant detention companies, but it also charges prisoners exorbitant rates for prison banking services. Next slide, please. Okay. So then, getting to restriction one. This restriction, it is the city's policy not to invest in a predetermined list of companies and their subsidiaries that are involved in Israel's violation of Palestinian rights. So with the, with the way the city back in 1986 did divestment from the South African apartheid system, was a blanket divestment from all companies in South Africa and Namibia. That's not what's being proposed here today. There is a long, there is a, how do I put this? It's recommended, in the case of the Israel-Palestine conflict, to focus on particular companies, and the way in which they impact Palestinian oppression, and so that's the approach taken here today. So the suggested list are these ten different companies. Airbnb, Caterpillar Inc., and Caterpillar Financial Services Corporation, Cisco, Dell, First Solar Inc., Intel, International Business Machines Corporation, also known as IBM, Microsoft Corporation, Motorola Solutions, and Wix.com. I want to note, for this section, please note that many corporations profit handsomely from Israel's apartheid and settler systems. They are not listed in Attachment One because of their exclusion from the city's investment policy if the first restrictions are adopted. So for instance, Lockheed Martin is heavily complicit in violence against Palestinians. Chevron is highly complicit in the oppression of Palestinians, but we already have a restriction against investing in fossil fuel companies in Richmond. Elbit Systems, that's another one that is, it's Israel's largest military company, which makes killer drones, large weapons systems and ammunition, and monitors walls along the US-Mexico border. That would be covered under one of the other proposed restrictions. So these are ten corporations that would not be covered by an existing or one of these proposed proposed policies. Next slide, please. First up, we have Airbnb. Airbnb, as many of you know, it's a publicly traded American company. One can go online and see a listing that's been put on by an individual or company, and you can go to that location and stay at that house or room in an apartment, et cetera. This, Airbnb lists accommodations in illegal settlements on occupied Palestinian and Syrian lands. So as per international law, settlements on Palestinian territory are illegal. It is not, at least under international law, allowed to settle land. Nonetheless, Airbnb hosts a lot of properties that are on illegally occupied land. These listings cover 39 settlements in the West Bank and in East Jerusalem, and they're often labeled as Israel when they are recognized by international law as parts of Palestine. And, apologies, I lost my place. In contrast, or let me back up a little bit. There has been advocacy with Airbnb for over seven or eight years now to ask them to either delist these properties, correct the name of these properties, indicate that they're on occupied land, and Airbnb refuses. In contrast, Airbnb suspended all of its operations in Russia and Belarus following the 2022 Russian invasion of Ukraine. Airbnb's operations support the expansion of Israel's illegal settlement enterprise by driving tourism into illegal settlements and providing settlers with jobs and income. Next slide, please. This is a quote from a listing on an Airbnb site, or listing, "Experience the tranquility of the desert and get a taste of warm Israeli hospitality." This is referring to a listing in the Negev Desert, which is the historic land for indigenous Bedouin people. So on the left-hand side, you see listings for, my Arabic pronunciation's going to be better than my Hebrew pronunciation, by the way. So on the left, you see listings for Kfar Adumim, which is an illegal settlement in the Negev Desert. And right below it is the destruction of Khan al-Ahma, which is the village of Bedouin, indigenous Bedouin people. And the Israeli Supreme Court has given the military and settlers directions to go ahead and bulldoze this Bedouin village in order to expand the former city, or expand the settlement, rather. So these two things are right next to each other in the Negev Desert. Next slide, please. The next company that this policy proposes to divest from is Caterpillar. Most people know Caterpillar as a bulldozer company, and indeed, they are. It is a, they provide construction machinery to the Israeli military, including the Caterpillar D9 bulldozer. These bulldozers are weaponized, so on them, they mount machine guns, bulletproof windows, radar technology, heat sensing systems. They are most notoriously used in Palestinian home demolitions, building illegal settlements, erecting border walls and checkpoints, and in military operations. Often, Caterpillar equipment is gifted to Israel from our government, and they have boasted that their equipment has played a major role in building and expanding settlements throughout occupied Palestinian lands since 1948. Next slide, please. Caterpillar bulldozers are most notorious for the pressure cooker, their use in the pressure cooker military strategy, which is basically where Israeli police and the military begin to bulldoze a home with people still inside. So if people refuse to leave their home, to settlers, then the military will get in these bulldozers and begin to bulldoze the home anyway. This is how Rachel Corey, who was an American who went to the West Bank to serve as protection against settlers, was run over and killed by a Caterpillar bulldozer. One moment. They also supply the Israeli military with other equipment, including various models of wheel loaders, armored excavators, and remote-controlled mini loaders, known as frontrunners or mini cats. It's regularly used in the construction and expansion of Israeli settlements and their infrastructure in the West Bank. They've also been recorded as key machinery in constructing the border wall between the U.S. and Mexico. Next slide, please. Cisco Systems. This is a multinational publicly traded tech company based in San Jose. They established in 2018 a long-term partnership with the Israeli government on a large-scale project that is being implemented in occupied Palestinian and Syrian lands. They've established a network of digital hubs, government-subsidized coworking spaces on Israeli settlement, in illegal Israeli settlements. They are also a large contractor for the Israeli military, and they provide, they provide all of the, or a large part of the networks and are the exclusive provider of servers, which was previously performed by Hewlett-Packard. Next slide, please. Dell is an American multinational technology company, and they just secured a significant contract with the Israeli Military Ministry of Defense for $150 million to supply servers and related services to various Israeli security bodies. They also have many subsidiaries in Israel. And so VMware, which is a subsidiary of Dell, provides virtualization systems to the military data across military units. And in the civilian sector, they provide Israeli police with maintenance services, virtualization products, and they also support mass surveillance infrastructure in East Jerusalem, which is occupied Palestinian territory. And so they provide about 400 CCTV cameras to monitor Palestinians. Next slide, please. First Solar. There are extensive reports about how the Israeli government uses greenwashing to cover up its illegal settlements and war crimes, particularly in settlement areas. So First Solar is a U.S. company, and they make, what are they called? Solar panels, thank you. So solar panels have, First Solar has been recorded as building out massive solar fields on occupied Palestinian land. So one is in Kalya, which is an illegal settlement in the occupied Jordan Valley, which is an incredibly fertile piece of land that has been stolen from Palestinians, and that takes up 33% of these solar panels. They also have provided 40,000 solar panels to Israel's biggest solar farm in the Negev Desert, which again displaces indigenous Bedouin people. Next slide, please. Intel. About two months, and some, about two months after Israel invaded Gaza, Intel announced in December 2023 that it would be investing $25 billion into Israel. They are going to be expanding an existing facility they have. So Intel has had a very active presence in Israel and the illegal settlement areas and occupied Palestinian territories since the 1970s. But this particular project is going to be expanding their existing facility, which is at Giryat Ghat, and that is Palestinian land. It's where a Palestinian village, people were displaced, a settlement was set up, and Intel set up an enormous factory, chip-making factory, that they are now expanding even more by $25 billion. Prime Minister Benjamin Netanyahu is thrilled and announces as Israel's largest ever investment. I believe at the time that Israel, or I'm sorry, that Intel announced this investment, over 15,000 Palestinian people had been killed by the IDF. Next slide, please. IBM, also known as International Business Machine Corps. So IBM, they're kind of an all-star. They've been complicit in oppression since 1911. They provided technology to Nazi Germany during World War II. They supplied computers for the population registry of the apartheid regime in South Africa, and now they've moved to Palestinians. So they don't discriminate in that way, at the very least. So now, they developed Israel's biometric population registry, which logs the ethnic and religious identities of citizens and non-citizens. So biometric means taking your physical information, scanning your eyes, your fingers, et cetera, and storing that information. And as part of Israel's digital acceleration, they have multiple contracts to digitize services, enhance data storage for all border crossings. These different systems that IBM in particular has helped develop, the military and through their subsidiary Red Hat, which is a subsidiary in Israel, they routinely discriminate between different population groups in Israel and the OPT. So Jewish citizens of Israel versus those living in illegal settlements versus Palestinian citizens of Israel versus Palestinian residents in different occupied territories, and so They have also provided technologies to help ICE, just for the record. Please. Thank you. Almost done. Microsoft. Microsoft provides a vast array of services to different Israeli institutions, including the military, government, and educational sectors. They primarily support the Israeli military and government through various technologies and services. And the ones I wanted to speak to, I'm like, where do I start? Deportations, prisons, surveillance, they do it all. Okay. Their first, they have opened an enormous R&amp;D center in Israel, which they have then used to collaborate with the military on the different military incursions that I've detailed into Gaza. They also provide Israeli police with cloud computing for all databases and systems. And they also have a subsidiary that has a surveillance product that uses facial biometrics and artificial intelligence to identify specific people within large crowds. So this is deployed against protesters in Palestine. Next slide, please. Motorola Solutions. This is a company that, you know, I think, I certainly associate them with my first flip phone, but they've really sort of forayed quite heavily into surveillance and weapon systems. They've manufactured bomb fuses for the IDF. They are listed in the, they sell surveillance products for use at U.S. prisons, on the border, by U.S. police agencies. Their equipment is installed in illegal settlements, and it's one of the major tools for surveillance in the settlements. They have been listed by the U.N. High Commissioner for Human Rights as one of the main companies involved in Israel's illegal settlements industry. Next slide, please. And then Wix. So Wix is a sort of new Squarespace. It's a build-your-own website platform. And the issue with Wix is it is considered a, it's considered a prime place to consider divestment and to encourage people not to use, to use it. It's one of those, it's a company that is hailed and recognized as one of the startup and tech darlings of Israel. And right next to it are large swathes of Palestinian communities that have no internet access whatsoever. They have also, in the past six months, fired and harassed employees for on their personal social media speaking up in support of Palestine, and they have been encouraging employees to prioritize support for the military incursion into Gaza. Next slide, please. So returning to the list we looked at earlier, of the companies that I just reviewed, the 10 that I just walked through, these are the ones that are also present and approved as investments for corporate bonds and commercial paper for the system that our city uses. So Caterpillar, Intel, IBM, and Microsoft. Now, the ones that I've highlighted are the ones that are only talking about restriction one, but if we were to also look at restrictions two through four, there would be more highlights on this list. So for instance, 3M supplies products for prison labor. That's also Alphabet, which, or I'm sorry, JP Morgan, Alphabet I could get to, but JP Morgan could be another one, U.S. Bancorp, and more. And so, but this is just to say that these highlighted companies are the ones that intersect with the ones that were just listed and are also Attachment 1 on the agenda. So the, next slide, please. The recommended action for this policy is to direct city staff to review and modify the City of Richmond investment policy, eliminating the investment of city funds into industries that facilitate violence, war, oppression, and apartheid. And I am happy to take any questions when the time comes. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I, I want to go to public speakers before I allow city council members to speak. We have 34 in-person speakers, and...
We have 20, 30 speakers online. If there's anyone else that would like to make a comment to the council that is joining us online, please raise your hand at this time. We'll go to the speakers that are in person, and as soon as we finish that, we'll go to the speakers that are joining us online. You'll each be allowed up to two minutes.
Right. So you will each have two minutes to speak. Right, so you will each have two minutes to speak. Shall we begin?
Okay, here we go. I'll call the first group of speakers. And please come forward. Abu Bakr. Salah. Badr. Karen S. Jonathan M. Nasar. Dove. And Huda. Okay. Our first speaker is Abu Bakr.
Bismillah, alhamdulillah wa salaatu wa salaam ala rasulillahi sallallahu alaihi wasallam. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I am not speaking just on my behalf today. I am speaking on behalf of my Jewish friends who could not make it due to Passover and wish they could have made it to support this brave and noble policy. I know the media will attempt to paint this as anti-Semitic, but as a Semite myself, whom my own father is buried next to his dear friend and Holocaust survivor, Yusef Winemaker, Yusef Winemaker, this is not anti-Semitic. On behalf of all my Jewish friends, their message is clear. This is not anti-Semitic. On behalf of the rabbis against genocide, who were just arrested days ago trying to bring food into Gaza, this is not anti-Semitic. What is anti-Semitic is to imply that being Jewish means you support genocide. Jews do not support genocide, Zionists do. So I ask anyone who opposes this policy, how do you define genocide? It is defined broadly as the deliberate killing of a large number of people from a particular nation or ethnic group with the aim of destroying that nation or group. If you define it as mass killing, if that's where you draw the line, mass killing without morals and scruples and the breaching of international law and committing war crimes, then know that Israel has been condemned by the international community for exactly these things. And our country is the one who keeps vetoing it. If you try to attend the funeral of each child that was killed, one a day, it would take you over 40 years to do so. If you define it as committing war crimes, such as targeting hospitals, know that Israel has targeted every single hospital in Gaza, as well as ambulances. Mass graves have been uncovered by these hospitals, containing the decapitated corpses and mutilated children and countless hospital staff still in their scrubs with their hands tied, zip-tied behind their back. There have been routine amputations by the IDF. For the captives, they have restrained too forcefully and left to rot. There have been routine amputations by them for that. If you define it as indiscriminate bombing and the displacement of a population, it can get worse since the majority of residents are displaced and their cities are turned into rubble. What if that happened to us? The antisemitism card is not going to work this time. Netanyahu tried to say that what is happening in Gaza is horrific, what is happening in the universities in America is horrific, but he destroyed every single university in Gaza, and that's much more horrific.
Thank you, council members, for considering this. And thank you, City of Richmond, for having the lowest rate of homicide in all Northern California. God bless you for the amazing job you're doing. Let's recognize what's beautiful. As a Palestinian, I just find it very difficult to speak about the subject because it's just endless and it's impossible to wrap up what I have in my mind in two minutes. However, I just want to tell you about lies. Lies that say that that so-called state of Israel is the only democracy in the Middle East, the only democracy that has a large population of Palestinians carrying the Israeli passports, who cannot find a job after they become a physician or a dentist. Why? Because the system is built against them from the get-go. They cannot join the army for three years of service, and if you do not join the army, you cannot get a job. But that's not where it starts. That's what it is, that's the simple thing. I am the sixth-generation Palestinian who's suffering the same thing, and I can't see yet another generation of displacement. I was in December in Turkey. I met this young man who's doing post-actual degree. He was, his mother, and his, was terrified when the boudoir was broken in their house in northern Israel suffered. They carried the Israeli passport, and they had a arrest warrant for him. And the mother said, "What did my son do? He's very, very bookworm." She, they said, "Oh, he wrote something about in support of Gaza just seven months ago." And she said, "But didn't Allah just came to punish these people?" They said, "Yeah, but we cannot grandfather him. He's going to face 10 years of jail." After that, he's running from one country to another. We brought him here, and just three weeks ago, he was put in custody of the airport for three days, although he carries the Israeli passport, only to go back to Turkey, from Turkey go to Germany, from Germany go to Italy. From Italy, right now, he's in Norway asking for political asylum. Same story that each one of us has gone through. May God continue to bless you, that the suffering continues.
Thank you. Badr.
Bismillah. Hi, city council members. My name is Badr Al-Jiishi, and I'm a resident of Oakland. I remember being very happy when I saw the East Bay Times article written in December, where it was written that the Richmond City Council decided to recognize the conflict abroad for what it really is. We don't need this blood money. We don't need this blood money coming back as ROI from corporations involved in this ethnic cleansing. I actually don't even think it's even a financially sound decision, given the major changes happening in Silicon Valley indicated by constant layoffs and rehiring. Some of the companies in the current portfolio are building systems that are using Gaza as a testing ground for things that will come back to be used against us. Google's Project Nimbus is basically a dumber version of Skynet from Terminator. It's a given that the surveillance technologies developed in the active war zone will be part of the ROI, and it will come back to the hands of people who thinks cops should be allowed to spy on our personal lives 24/7. Imagine a future that looks like Minority Report. By profiting from these corporations, we are racing towards that reality. The founder of wix.com, which was on the presentation earlier, is a former member of Israel's elite hacking team, Unit 8200. He, I wouldn't be surprised at all if Unit 8200 spies on Americans. They're not part of the Five Eyes Alliance of Intelligence. So it's not like our NSA has unobstructed access to their intelligence, so we can't rule it out. It's not far-fetched at all, given the fact that Israel's been caught spying on America and American politicians in Congress several times in the past, but they always get a free pass. The Pegasus malware, which was used by MBS in Saudi Arabia to assassinate and spy on Jamal Khashoggi in 2018, was developed by an Israeli company named NSO, and they sold it to him. And it would do well for the city council to learn about these espionage techniques, as I wouldn't put it past the IDF to spy on all of us, actually, for even talking about this right now. I support this effort 100%, both in the macro...
Your time has expired.
I'm canceling my Gmail account, thank you.
Our next speaker is Karen S., followed by Jonathan M. Karen S., followed by Jonathan M.
Earlier, my name was called Nasar.
Okay, I'm going through the names right now. So I haven't called you yet. What's your name?
Nasar.
Nasar, okay, so Jonathan is not here, guess, so go ahead, Nasar.
Hi, my name is Nasar. I'm here to request the City of Richmond divest itself from any company or asset or any entity which is supporting genocide. Let's be part of humanity, not apartheid, mass murder, war crimes, ethnic cleansing, and approaching residents of Gaza who have lived there for hundreds of years. I would like to ask how a matter which is about genocide in Gaza has anything to do with making someone feel better here in Richmond? How investing in war machines benefiting a country in the Middle East, making someone feel safe here in Richmond? I asked my Jewish brothers and friends, what would you have said if the world had turned away from genocide during World War II? And said that, "Oh, this has nothing to do with us. It is happening somewhere in Europe. We don't have to do anything else." Thank you.
Dove. D-O-V.
Thank you. My name is Dr. Dove Baum. I'm an Israeli Jew, and I'm here to thank you for considering this petition. I want to say today is Passover, but it's also the end of Passover, so it's not an excuse not to be here, for those who are not here. But anyone who calls apartheid, or genocide, or occupation, or discrimination a Jewish value is an anti-Semite themselves. I have dedicated all my life to working within a movement in Israel of for equality, for democracy, for freedom, for all, for justice. And I'm part of a group called Israelis Against Apartheid. And here in the US, I live in Oakland now, I work with the American Friends Service Committee, the Quaker organization. And in fact, I conduct corporate research. And I'm very proud to say that a lot of the presentation you saw today is based on our work. And our research, in our research, we beg and ask institutions such as the City of Richmond, but also churches and unions and cities and universities and the state, you know, the federal government, to stop their ongoing support for Israeli apartheid to the Israeli military, the tremendous and infinite impunity that is given to Israel in its crimes. This is not helping Israel. It's not helping the people of Israel, and it's not helping Jews. It is killing us. It is taking away our future. It is taking away our hope for real peace anytime in this land that some call Palestine and some call Israel. Thank you so much for considering this petition. I hope that the City of Richmond will help others as well, invest in the well-being of ourselves, our people, and our planet, and not in destruction and horrors as we see on the news every day. Thank you very much.
Our next group of speakers, I shall call your name, please come forward. Hyundai, Lorraine, Hassan, Jose, Carolina, Kiara, Ahmed, Burid, and Ayas, and Ed R.
Huda.
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 Yes.
H-U-D-A.
H-D, H-U-D-A. Salaam alaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Just wanted to bring your attention to a couple of things. I was back home for about a month and a half, and where my family lives is another open-air prison. And I was only allowed to go to the Aqsa Mosque twice in that amount of time. And that was because when you enter, once you leave, someone else has to let you out and allow you to go. I've lost my Palestinian citizenship a long, long, long time ago, and I go in and I visit as an American citizen. And as an American citizen, I would not be allowed to go in a lot of different areas because, obviously, the background of me is I'm a Palestinian. And to go to, to be in Jerusalem or the Jerusalem vicinity and not being able to go to the Aqsa Mosque only twice in a month and a half is just absolutely ridiculous and horrifying. And some of the other things I wanted to talk about is a lot of people, Palestinians, cannot go places and cannot go, cannot leave their homes. And the reason you cannot leave your home completely, everybody, you cannot, everybody go to a wedding or everybody go to a funeral. Because once you leave your house, the settlers come in and sit in your house, and all of a sudden, I mean, you know, you could see Muslim women cover up, and all of a sudden, you have a male Jew, or two, or three, or as many people living in your house, living in your house, and you cannot relax and be comfortable in your own home. And all of a sudden, these people are taking over. They're your roommates, which you've never asked them to come in, and they never, they weren't supposed to be there. So people don't leave their homes completely. If they have to go to an event, they would only go half of the family, and I know my time is coming up. But this is more, happens more than you could ever think of. And I really appreciate the fact that you guys are taking this on, and I really appreciate all of you, and thank you.
Lorraine.
Hello, my name is Jose Cruz. I want to appreciate everybody who's here, everyone who's in support of Palestine, and all the people here, the council and the mayor. Thank you, thank you so much for being here. I just want to remind you guys that in Ramadan, while we were hearing and seeing all these stories, we were fasting. And that's nothing compared to the people who were fasting in Gaza and Palestine, people without water, people who had to live in the situation where we couldn't even fathom. You know, so that's what I wanted to bring up. To the Shentian people, we're fasting, people were, you know, in prayers for them here in America, here out there. You know, just wanted to remind everyone that, you know, like you said earlier, Mayor Martinez, we have to have a conscience, you know? And of those who have not came to that conscious, please think about what's going on. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Lorraine Ortega, followed by Hassan.
I'm Lorraine Ortega, and thank you, Mayor Martinez, for calling this special meeting. I'm a fairly new resident in Richmond, and I'm so proud to live in a city that voted for a ceasefire resolution way back in October. And I'm so glad to live with neighbors who are aligned on this. I'm here to show my unequivocal support for Item G1, to divest from companies that are involved in any way with the prison industrial complex, arms and weapons industries, border and surveillance industries, and in Israel's atrocities against Palestinian lives. I'm the daughter of an immigrant father. I'm a teacher, I'm a mother. And I originally hail from the El Paso, Texas, and Juarez, Mexico border. I've lived in the Phoenix metro, too. This is all to say that I've witnessed firsthand how these kinds of companies, products, and supposed services are used against our immigrant communities and our communities of color. I've witnessed my students and their families be directly impacted. And I've been in community with refugees who flee their war-torn countries, which is horror spurred by our own federal government. The militarization of our southern border and the surveillance and terror enacted against any resistance to state oppression and repression, as we saw with NoDappel and current university encampments, just to name two out of countless examples, are a direct result of our federal government using our tax dollars against us, its own citizens. More importantly is that our federally elected officials, including our presidents, refuse to follow through with the majority of their constituents' needs and demands to end the genocide. Thank goodness that our own local city council and mayor are willing to divest from such incredibly harmful companies, harmful to our environment as well as we spiral toward climate catastrophe, harmful to our community's health and safety, and as we are currently witnessing, responsible for devastating genocide and erasure of our Palestinian relatives. I hope this isn't the end. I urge you to divest from such hurtful companies. We are all connected, and I hope we see our funds, or these funds reinvested into companies with our rich communities' health and welfare in mind.
Thank you. Hassan, our next speaker is Hassan, followed by Carolina. Hassan.
Bismillah, rahman rahim. My name is Hoshien Hassan. I'm here to boycott everyone who supports the killing of Sheldon, a woman. I'm here against the material and military support for Israel. I am among the representatives of the Muslim community in the city of Pranthud, which demands an end of all material and military support for the killers of women and children. Enough is enough. Enough with the killing and wandering of more than 100,000, most of them children, women, and all people like me. Thank you.
Carolina.
My name is Carolina, and I have been a resident of Richmond since 2022. In that time, I've gotten to know the beautiful diversity and vibrancy of this city, and I share that with pride to all who I meet. The City of Richmond considers itself to be the city of pride and purpose. However, this pride and purpose centered in our rich community is tainted when we profit from companies who base their business model for mass incarceration of people, border surveillance, and apartheid. At this time, when our institutions are being pushed to face how we have been profiting from these systems of exploitation and oppression, it would be a stain on our city's character and expressed purpose. and expressed purpose if we were to walk away from this question and maintain the status quo. San Quentin Prison across the bridge is a constant and for some, a daily reminder of the proximity of mass incarceration in our society. Each day, we see in the news and from personal accounts of Palestinians, the horrors being committed in Gaza with our tax dollars. The topics of mass incarceration, apartheid, and border surveillance are larger than what the city of Richmond can tackle on its own. However, at a bare minimum, we as a city can choose to divest from companies profiting from these deeply shameful and harmful practices. Therefore, as a proud Richmond resident, I ask of the city council, please vote in favor of these restrictions and turn away from profiting from these systems of oppression. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kiala, followed by Ahmad.
My name is Kayla Ushua, and I'm a Richmond community member and youth worker. Some of my family members came here from 10,000 miles away in Brazil seeking refuge from state violence and have made a home in Richmond for the past 12 years. I want to thank you, Richmond City Council, for everything you are doing to boldly and unapologetically stand against this horrific Israeli apartheid regime and genocide of the Palestinian people. I stood with you in October until 2:00 a.m., when you became the first city in the country to stand with Palestine. And I am standing here with you today to say yes to G1, to divesting from genocide and war. We are here with you today. The diverse Black, Latinx, Arab, Palestinian, anti-Zionist, Jewish, migrant, low-income, frontline communities of Richmond stand with you against this genocide. We stand against all settler colonial violence against our people. Our city has a rich legacy of standing against apartheid. We are here to celebrate the city continuing this legacy by refusing to profit from the genocide of the Palestinian people and the illegal 75-year occupation of Palestine, as well as weapons manufacturing companies, prison industrial complex, and the military industrial complex. Divestment from Israeli apartheid and genocide is an unequivocal moral and ethical mandate of our city. Thank you for standing for human rights and against this U.S.-funded genocide tonight. Our struggles for a free Palestine and abolition are intertwined. I'm incarcerated and impacted. My father was criminalized and incarcerated in 2012, contributing to his premature death at age 54 years old. Our city should not be profiting from the prison industrial complex, which mines our communities of our people and siphons our loved ones away to warehouse them in prisons. May we live to see a day where we move past these carceral systems. Many of these companies that will be divested from by these proposed restrictions are also complicit in environmental racism in our city and the climate crisis. Our Richmond youth deserve a future full of life-affirming resources, and we do not want that future to be funded by the suffering, murder, and genocide of Palestinian people in Gaza and all of occupied Palestine here in the U.S. or anywhere in the world.
Your time has expired.
Free Palestine.
Our next speaker is Ahmad, followed by Fareed. Yes, Ahmad.
Hello. I think, I think I'm Ahmad, but I think you might have a few Ahmad. So can you spell it for me?
A-H-N-A-D.
Oh, there's, there's another one waiting.
Okay. Two minutes. Ready?
All right. Good evening, Mayor Martinez and esteemed council members. As a Palestinian-American, I'm honored to be here, and I want to thank you for your leadership. In 2023, we were the first local city council to pass a ceasefire resolution, and I couldn't be prouder of this board and this council and the mayor's leadership. You again have given us, this great city, the opportunity to lead. And I urge you, with my community members, to please vote yes on item G1, for us to review and modify the city's investment policies, eliminating investment of funds in industries that facilitate violence, war, oppression, and apartheid. Of course, in this time and moment, this is important as it relates to what's happening in Palestine, in the occupied West Bank, and in Gaza, which is under siege, but also more broadly, as we look into the future, as this will not only impact Gaza and Palestine today, but other countless countries in the near future. This policy upholds the simple principle that Palestinians are entitled to the same rights as the rest of humanity. We're not asking for anything more, anything less, I apologize. Also, as a Semitic person myself, I can tell you that none of this is antisemitic. As the speaker before me spoke, who is Jewish herself, also told you that this policies will actually make our Jewish brothers and sisters safer, and make us safer, and improve our lives. Israel is occupying and colonizing Palestinian land, discriminating against even Palestinian citizens who have Israeli citizenship, as another speaker had mentioned. So denying Palestinian refugees their right to return to their homes. A lot of Palestinians here that are sitting in this chamber now have Palestinian lands and owners of Palestinian land, they can't even go back, let alone to live in their own land as indigenous Palestinians. Thank you.
Fareed.
As a Muslim man, I'm allowed to marry a Jewish woman and entrust her to be my wife and the mother of my children. Muslims, Christians, and Jews have lived together in peace for centuries. Conflict did not start except with establishing the brutal occupation of the state of Israel, systematically displacing millions of Palestinians out of their homes, expanding illegal settlements, and committing massacres and violations of international law for over 75 years. So it is very important to note this distinction. When we talk about freeing Palestine, ending Israeli occupation, we're talking about ending a brutal apartheid, illegal Zionist colonial regime. This has nothing to do with our fellow Jews who are willing to live legally in peace as we have lived together for centuries. When the South African apartheid regime was dismantled, white South Africans were not thrown into the ocean. They continued to live alongside their fellow Black citizens with equal rights and dignity. Unfortunately, the U.S. is the primary supporter of the apartheid Israeli occupation and their ongoing atrocities. These atrocities are taking place with our tax dollars and through the voices of our government representatives whom we vote for. So it is absolutely our responsibility as American citizens at all levels, including city councils, to take all necessary measures to stop the ongoing genocide and the U.S.-sponsored apartheid Israeli occupation. One of the most effective ways to do so is through divestment from any investments that support Israel, along with consumer, academic, and cultural boycotts. This is what brought the apartheid South African regime down and what we hope will end the brutal apartheid Israeli occupation as well. I strongly support this resolution. Thank you, city of Richmond, for being on the right side of history. I appreciate all of you.
Our next speaker is Ayas Satawi, followed by Ed R.
First, I want to thank this council for being the first city in the nation to pass a ceasefire resolution. And now this. I'm a displaced Palestinian from the West Bank, where there is actually an illegal settlement, Barkan, on my own land in my own town, Sarta. And I want to give this time, or I want to give my time to have you hear a message from a Palestinian refugee from what's now called Israel, a refugee in Gaza since her birth. I know this person. Her name is Aya. Aya is a single, beautiful 21-year-old who, unlike the girls her age, who are planning her weddings or the next vacation. What I'm trying, what I'm gonna play now is what she hears in the complete darkness of her room. This is what she hears every night, the entire night. She texted me this voice message from her room at 2:00 a.m. in her early morning. Obviously, these are F-16s, the whole night, the entire night. Just imagine the trauma. She didn't sleep. She texts me at 4:00 a.m., 5:00 a.m., 6:00 a.m., morning, night, evening. She can't sleep. She's terrified. I don't have this one, you know, just, let's be on the side, the good side of history and help these people out.
Okay. Our next speaker is Ed R., and will the following speakers please come forward? Yessen, Stan, Rocky, Rocky Chao, Rohan, Frank Sterling, Shan, Ahmad Khan, Jevanka Bekos, Rob Lipton, and Jamie Young. Ed R.
Hi. First, I'd like to praise the diocese, you know, the council for considering this proposal, and of course, for passing the first ceasefire resolution last year. I come here as a former resident of Richmond and now a Hayward resident. And as you know, like Hayward passed the first divestment city proposal. And I'm hoping that you follow suit. And I'd like to really congratulate the work done to expound on what divestment looks like. I think this proposal is visionary. I think the presentation given about it was a masterclass in what complicity looks like. Really accolades, accolades to the work done. And I think, you know, just listening to it, what it gives me is hope. Yeah, I mean, as part of the many residents who have spoken out against this genocide since October, going from city council to city council, just trying to get our voices heard, because we have all been desperate and the U.S. state has failed to abide by justice. You know, I mean, there's a U.N. Security Council vote that has passed to put a stay on Israeli aggression. And to this day, like, they're still planning to invade Rafa. So, you know, it is work like this that I think emboldens us as normal folk, as working folk, to see that something is being done, right? To pursue just futures, you know, where we're funding infrastructure in that war and to divest from these military operations and prison operations to do something good with our money. So just thank you, and please pass this.
Yessen. Spell Y-Y-E-S-E-N. No? Stan, Stan Woods.
Hello, city council. Stan Woods gave his spot up to me. He walked out. My name is Michael Toll. I'm a Richmond resident. I'm a working-class person. I'm a union member, and I'm an Israeli Jew. I am so proud of my city council for proposing this resolution, which I'm sure will pass. I'm also sure that everybody that votes it up will be reelected by landslide, because this reflects the priorities of the working class in Richmond. None of us consent to our tax dollars being spent on violence and genocide against our Palestinian siblings. The working class of this state and the country feel the same way. And your brave move will pave the way for similar policy in other parts of the country. I also want to share a message in Hebrew as well for my Jewish Hebrew speakers who are confused on this and who may be listening on Zoom. The only time someone tried to fight me in life was with a Israeli Jew. We were attacked in San Francisco a week or two ago, and he saw me, he shouted, "It's a cop, this." He said in Hebrew, "I hope all of your family is dead." I said in Hebrew, "Why are you saying that?" He didn't know what to say. Every Jewish must know that we, all Palestinians and Jews, have to oppose the Nazis in this country, the Nazis in the administration and outside the administration. Bibi Netanyahu also doesn't care about the terrorists. He can stop this war, and he doesn't want to, because he hates Palestinians more than the terrorists. We have to stop this war. Free Palestine. Thank you.
Rocky Chao.
Good evening, city council. And first off, if I get started, could we give a round of applause to the city council for passing the first ceasefire resolution back in October? Thanks, everyone. So my name is Rocky Chao. I am a proud Richmond resident living in the Hilltop area. And it's, first off, it's not complicated. Despite a few fringe voices rather vehemently asserting that genocide isn't happening, it is happening. As of now, over 34,000 Palestinians have been indiscriminately murdered by the hands of Israeli occupation forces, 77,000 injured, over 10,000 under rubble. Most residents displaced from their homes and facing purposeful famine. This list goes on, and the reality is this, it's happening in Gaza and is incredibly barbaric. And I also want to highlight as an animal advocate that mass atrocities by the Zionist entity is also being committed to animals in Gaza as well. And it includes, but not limited to, donkeys being run over by IOF tanks, zoo animals starved to death, stray dogs being shot indiscriminately. The list goes on, and it's all recorded by the soldiers themselves. And these atrocities that has been committed to all life in occupied Palestine flies directly in the face against our collective morals. Bisan Alda is a young Palestinian journalist in Gaza, whose Instagram I follow closely and who witnessed firsthand the death and suffering of her people. And she has a message to the world, quote, "My message to the world, you are not innocent in what's happening to us. You as governments or peoples that support Israel's annihilation of my people," end quote. Our nation for far too long have funded the genocide against Bisan, against Gazans, and other folks of Palestine. We have a long way to get our national governments to do the right thing, but tonight, we have an opportunity to stop that funding of genocide right here in this city. Richmond is a city of conscience and stands against genocide. Therefore, I call on this council to stand with Palestinians, anti-Zionist Jews, and allies to divest from companies that are complicit in ethnic cleansing and happening in occupied Gaza. Free Palestine.
Rohan. Sabrina.
Hello, I'm Rohan. I want to commend you for being the first city to pass a ceasefire resolution. But that is not enough. You need to materially help the Palestinians. And one way you can do that is to divest from companies supporting genocide and apartheid. I, like the previous speaker, I personally witnessed, as Hayward voted, to divest from genocide. And I believe that you should follow their example and divest from genocide, too. And oh, by the way, I support ranked choice voting. Thank you so much.
Frank Sterling.
All right. Miuyam, Miuyam Cho'om. Nozam Lovick for this resolution and Natom Frank Sterling Jr., Yekah. And I was just greeting you in traditional California language of the Rincon ban of the Seno Indians that was almost exterminated by a genocide of California Indians. And I come up here today to urge you to pass this resolution that you're all working on and to thank you for the work that you are doing in support of all of our Palestinian friends. And not just them, but the world, because I think the world is watching. And we all thank you. And just in the interest of time, I'll cut my thing short here. But I encourage you to spread your word to the other city councils. I'm a Contra Costa resident, but I came here from Ani out tonight to support all my friends and to support you all for making this resolution. So if you can, spread the word. We're working on stuff out of We're working on stuff out in Antioch, and we could, we have some city council members out there that could use the support of other folks going through the same thing that you are when you make these bold decisions. So, again, notion Lovik, which means thank you in my traditional language, and it means my heart is full. So, thank you.
Our next speaker is Shan Zazi, followed by Ahmed Khan. S-H-A-N, Zazi. Okay. Ahmad Khan.
I wasn't prepared with the speech. I was just told that, hey, we're gonna put your name in the thing. So, I really thank you guys for approving this. It means a lot for the Palestinian people in our community and the world as well, and free Palestine. Thank you.
Ahmad Khan.
Yeah, he kind of stole my line, too. I'm not really perfect. Coming back home from commuting, my friend calls me, says there's an opportunity to spread some awareness about what's going on. I'm really actually very happy that you guys are all aware of what's going on, you're speaking out about it and teaching people as well what's going on. It's super easy, you know, the kids are doing it better than us. They flip the phone open, they can find out what's happening in the world. We don't need, we don't need the, I'm not gonna say that on the thing, but either way, you can look up what's going on. So, I don't want to take away from everything that these amazing people have said today. It's really moved my heart, you know, it's been a very depressing time. This is one of the most depressing Ramadans that we've ever had. Just the fact that you can go and eat your food, knowing that your brother is either underneath a building or he's eating grass, because that's what they were doing, they were eating grass at the time. So, I'm, I'm mostly here, everyone knows what's happening over there, you can even be blind and see what's happening over there. You just open up your eyes, look at what's going on, you know, you can see that the members of the council are aware of what's happening there. No hate to anybody, just completely understand the situation, you'll understand what, what's happening to our brothers and sisters, they're your brothers and sisters as well. So, you know, you guys are fighting for humanity, you know, we're, every night, we were praying for them every night, we were prolonging our prayers, prolonging our supplications, or asking for God to protect them and help them, you know, even in our companies, we are spreading awareness as, as small as we can, you know, we can't just, we live in a, we live in a time where knowledge is very easily accessed now, you know, you don't need to go to, I don't want to say that either, but, sorry, but you can access this knowledge very easily. Please take advantage of it, please educate yourself on the matter. This is not IT, where we're not teaching you how to build computers or anything. You can just look it up, search it up, find out what's happening to your brothers and sisters, support, please, and yeah, free Palestine.
Our next speaker is Jevanka Bekos, followed by Rob Lipton, and then Jamie Young. Is she not? Okay, next speaker is Rob Lipton.
First, thank you all. This is an amazing show, showing of support, and I really appreciate it. These are the words of Dr. Rafat Aliar. "If I must die, you must live to tell my story." I'm not gonna read the whole poem. He was assassinated in December, purposely assassinated him and his whole family in Gaza. I was a poet laureate for Richmond, I helped with a lot of RPA things. I also helped start a group called a Jewish Voice for Peace like quarter century ago. I was on their first board. I'm a Richmond resident, and proudly so, so happy to be here. My point is simple, this isn't about Israel. It's not even about Palestinians per se, this is about the US supporting some random settler colonial country for whatever purposes we have, and enabling that country to become a psychotic baby. Let's not enable them, and this kind of step here in disinvesting as part of the BDS is extraordinarily important, even though we have 100,000-person city, it has reverberations all over the country, and it's heard very distinctly in the Middle East. People in the Middle East do not think of this as an Israeli genocide and settler colonialism. They see this as an American effort using Israel as a weapon. So, it's really obviously about us here paying taxes into a system and supporting a system that's allowing for this. If this wasn't the case, many commentators on this, in, on this whole conflict settler colonial effort, say that Israel would have to normalize to the region. The US is keeping them from doing that. The West, the global North, is doing that. And that's why we at Jewish Voice for Peace are pushing the US position, because effectively now, Israel is a 51st state in terms of its economic and political connection to the US, and we're trying to break that. A divestment vote, pro-divestment vote is essential for helping that, and I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is Jamie Young, followed by Mark Wasberg, Ayesha A., Al Dargma, Annie Pinnell, Dominici Morris, Amy Baron, and Isabel Gil Garcia. Jamie Young.
Good evening. My name is Jamie. I'm a mother, healthcare worker, and resident of Richmond. I am here today in support of divesting from companies complicit in apartheid and genocide. For the past six months, over 40,000 Palestinians have been killed by Israeli forces but funded by us, the United States. Mass graves are being uncovered at hospitals, healthcare workers are being executed, over 15,000 children have been killed. We have been complicit, complicit in atrocity for far, far too long. Now, I would like to read you a short poem by the Palestinian author, Mosab Abu Toha, and I dedicate this poem to the over 15,000 children who have been killed in Gaza. "You were so small in my hands, no shrapnel could hit you, but the dust and smoke of the bomb rushed into your lungs. No need for any gauze, they just closed your eyes. No need for any shroud, you were already in your swaddle blanket. Free Palestine, divest now."
Mark Wasberg.
There is no genocide, it's just a bunch of pack of lies. I said Hamas, Hamas, the Ahab, the Arabs, they're starting all this trouble in Israel. They attacked Israel for no reason, okay? They attacked, and Israel's gonna take care of business. Israel doesn't care, how many people gonna have to die because of Hamas attacked Israel in the first place? So, don't blame Israel for defending themselves, because they have to do what they gotta do. I said, these people are violating our First Amendment rights when they stopping the Jews, when they stopping the Jews going to places, they're doing the same thing that Adolf Hitler did.
You know, I know that sometimes people say things that sound like nonsense, but they have the right to say it, and we have the responsibility, I believe, to listen even though we disagree. So, if you will allow him to say whatever it is he has to say, let him say it as long as he says it respectfully.
Israel's gonna kill, but Israel's just gonna take care of business, and they're gonna keep killing and killing and killing because of Hamas, because Ahab, the Arabs, because the Muslims are out there killing and massacring people. Now you see all the writing here in the United States, they're even stopping the Jewish students from going to school, violating their First Amendment right. Ahab, the Arabs, they don't believe in no First Amendment right, they don't believe in a ceasefire, a ceasefire ain't nothing but a joke. And more kids are gonna, they come up here and complain about these children dying. Well, once you tell, what about the children that was killed in, in Israel on the massacre they did, huh? The genocide, burning babies in ovens, when that was out there shooting, killing people like a sport, that's what they was doing, and there was yelling and screaming in the name of their god, massacring people for nothing. Yeah, we're gonna kick ass, because the United States is behind Israel, and we're gonna keep supplying weapons to Israel, and Israel's gonna totally wipe them out and set up a new state in Palestine. Like it or not, it's gonna happen.
Our next speaker.
So, um, could you please escort him out? I would like to apologize, I would like to apologize for the behavior of, one of our residents. We, we know who he is, and, um, right, so, so, you know, just let him do what he does as long as he doesn't hurt anyone. So, I, I want to thank, thank you for doing your best to allow him to do what he does worst.
Our next speaker is Ayesha A., followed by Al Dargma.
Assalamualaikum, my name is Ayesha. I'm an organizer with the Asian Pacific Environmental Network here in Richmond. I want to start by giving my deep appreciation for city council, the mayor's office, the vice mayor's office, for considering the support of the Palestinian people and oppressed groups globally. This is a brave and necessary act of solidarity. Tonight, we've heard very, many moving stories about what it means to be a Richmond resident and worker, and how many of our immigrant communities were forced to leave our homelands by violence and war. As Shiva mentioned earlier, Richmond is a sanctuary city and a human rights city. The actions of militaries and corporations who are facilitating the genocide of Palestinian people and oppressed groups all over the world are in direct contradiction to those guiding principles. Investing in the war industry is counter to Richmond's commitment to promoting human rights, justice, equity, and an inclusion and peaceful environment. As we see all around us right now, immigrants are an integral part of Richmond community, profiting off of surveillance industry and contributing to the criminalization of immigrants is counter to our values and policy stances on immigration, and we keep our communities safe, not state-backed surveillance. I fully support the passing of this proposal, and thank you again for your deep commitment.
Al Dargma.
Peace be upon you, God's mercy and blessings. And first of all, thank you very much for your courage and your hard work, Mr. Mayor Eduardo Martinez and your council. Thank you very much for your, your stand and your, your consciousness. Thank you for your humanity. You give us hope in humanity and democracy. You're a beacon of hope for, for this nation, and you set a great example. Thank you. God says in the Quran, "We have created you in tribes and nations so that you may get to know one another," so we can get to know one another. And imagine the possibilities and how, when we get to know one another, our cultures, the foods, and so much things could be built. We could build bridges and relationships and trade, and all the great things that humanity can have and enjoy as we have in the past. I wanted to shed some light on this topic about Palestinian Christians in occupied Palestine by the illegal Israeli occupation. Many people don't know this, but some people may like or dislike this person, but Tucker Carlson did an interview with a Palestinian priest, a father, it's on YouTube, but he spoke with a Palestinian Christian, a father, who spoke out about the oppression that the Palestinian Christian community is facing there. It's not just Muslims or Arabs, there's Arab Christians that are suffering, there's, there's Jews that are suffering in Israel's apartheid state that closes down churches and kills Christian Palestinians as well in Gaza and in the West Bank, and takes their homes and lands. And in this whole thing that's happening, Israel illegally, Israel's illegal occupation has illegally taken 7,000 acres to settle, illegal settlements and all this. So, please divest, that's where it hurts them the most.
Annie Pinnell. Annie Pinnell.
Hi, I am a resident of North and East Richmond, District 6, and I'm speaking in support of divesting from systems of criminalization and oppression. I am so proud to be a resident of this city. I look around and I see decisions being made all over the state and country, and I'm so grateful to have representatives here at this most important and local level who are bravely making decisions and standing up for the most vulnerable residents of our city. All my feeds right now are full of brave students all over the country who are facing incarceration, police violence, expulsion, because they know that what's happening right now in Palestine isn't right and acceptable. So, as an adult far out of college now, I'm here to you, my administration, seeking to ask for divestment here. And I'm here also to thank you and have gratitude that we don't need to set up encampments here, you brought this to us. Last year, we resolved to stand in solidarity with the Palestinian people of Gaza and call for a ceasefire, and in passing this proposal, we back up that action, we backed that up with action and our money. And over the last four years, I've watched the council work on investing in systems of care in our city, and I'm so proud of a lot of the ways that our city has been spending its money to support a healthy community and future, such as the youth works program to employ youth residents. So, let's not fund the safety and care of our city with the profits of the very systems that we're working to overcome. We need to invest in the health and safety of our residents, not the arms that jeopardize people all over the world. In this city, we love and we support our immigrant residents, they make us who we are, and we need to invest in them, not border detention. We need to invest in keeping our residents out of the prison system and help systems impacted individuals reintegrate and thrive, not the companies that uphold and benefit from mass incarceration and the prison industrial complex. And as a human rights city, we need to invest in justice, equity, and a peaceful environment for all. We need to stand behind and with our Palestinian neighbors and their friends and family in Palestine, and we cannot benefit from the loss of human rights and human lives in Palestine. So, again, thank you so much for your representation and your continuing action in our city. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Dominici Morris, followed by Amy Baron, and our last in-person speaker will be Isabel Gil Garcia. Dominici.
Good afternoon, my name is Dominici Morris, I'm a resident of District 3. I want to thank you for having this special meeting. Richmond is a very special city, not many cities are taking part and taking, having these conversations right now. So, let's keep being special. So, for us to keep being special, we need to stop investing in some of these things, right? We need to stop investing in systems and industries that are profiting from oppression and injustice. We need to also stop investing in industries that are manufacturing arms and weapons that are causing harm instead of promoting life, industries that are fueling the genocides in Gaza, industries that are involved in Industries that are involved in mass surveillance that are targeting our immigrant community and separating families. Industries that are imprisoning our people, mostly black and brown populations, and exploiting them for their labor, uh, deteriorating their humanity, and not providing environments for positive transformations. My father was part of the, while he was swallowed up by industrial, uh, prison industrial complex for crimes he did not commit. Uh, he had to take a plea to get out. When he got out, he had a felony on his record. He was a broken man and he had no resources and had type two diabetes. So it took him a long time to try to get himself back together. He never made it that way. My father passed, um, back in December, uh, from throat cancer. Um, so we need to make sure that we're investing in systems that are uplifting our communities, such as healthcare, housing, food, school programs, reimagining of public safety, to help transform Richmond to a place where folks don't have to be in need and for we can make sure that we still keep being special and being front runners. Thank you.
Amy Barron.
Good evening, can you guys hear me okay? Okay, thank you. I wanna first start by saying thank you to the city council. My name is Amy Barron and I'm a resident of Richmond and a teacher at Richmond High School. Becoming a teacher has taught me two things. Education is one of the most important and powerful tools we have as a community, and without education, we lose our humanity. Being that Richmond was the first city to call for a ceasefire, I would like for us to continue to be on the right side of history. Divestment and disclosure is a step in the right direction, and it's the bare minimum of what we can do for the Palestinian people. They deserve to be humanized and to have their voices heard. They deserve so much more, and frankly, we failed them in not doing this before. But you have a chance to set a precedent that Richmond will not continue to perpetuate and continue a cycle of violence and no longer be aid to a genocide that has persisted for 75 years. Our struggles have and will always be intersectional. I've spoken with my students about how the surveillance they experience here is the same surveillance that other youth abroad experience. These companies have long profited off of both the struggles of our community and the struggles of those abroad. I wanna remind you that our youth are watching and seeing everything we do and they are listening. My students deserve a better city that doesn't support companies that profit from terrorizing them and their families. And they deserve a space that they can look up to. Mayor, you mentioned that Richmond has always been a willing, a city that is willing to do the work to make this world a better place. So now I ask that you right our wrongs and do better. Thank you.
Isabel Gil Garcia.
Good evening, council. Um, I just first wanna start off by thanking you for bringing this resolution to the table. Uh, my name is Isabel Gil Garcia and I am also a teacher at Richmond High School and a proud Richmond resident as well. Uh, I wanted to speak tonight in support of tonight's agenda item G1 and the proposed set of restrictions on the city's investments. It is not lost on me that we are living in a time of increased militarization as the US empire grasps at straws to remain in control through the prison and military industrial complexes. This is why it is more than important than ever for our city to take a continued stance to maintain pressure on companies complicit in genocide by withholding our dollars. By passing this resolution, we would be sending a message that Richmond, California is a city that will not remain silent in the midst of a federally funded genocide. In my own teaching, I stress the interconnectedness of our struggles for liberation. That's what's happening, that what's happening in Gaza is connected to the construction of a cop campus in San Pablo and others nationally, is connected to the treatment of people in ICE detention centers. I teach my students that divesting is a powerful form of resistance. What a powerful message this resolution would send to the youth of Richmond that their local government is standing on business. Thank you and as always, free Palestine.
That was our last in-person speaker. Now we'll move to the speakers that are joining us via Zoom. We have 41 speakers.
Uh, excuse me, uh, before we, uh, before we go to the, uh, speakers online, I would like to apologize to, uh, Jevanka Beckles, who was on the city council. She is currently, uh, AC Transit Board. But, uh, she wanted to speak in support of this item. But because I gave her wrong information, she was not able to stay and speak. Instead, she had to, uh, go to a meeting that she had rearranged, uh, in order to speak. At the time, that, uh, was not the time to speak. So my apologies to you, Jevanka. Thank you.
Okay, I'll move on to the Zoom speakers. The first group of speakers will be Nadav, Mindy Pines, Matop Ben Yosef, Amber Hatfield and Rogue. Nadav, you'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm against any BDS resolution targeted against Israel. It saddens me that such an uneducated person, voicing nonsense at best, is the mayor of a city in the US. During the short time I have, I'll try to educate you, dear mayor. Apartheid, 20% of Israel population is Arab Israeli with equal rights. They serve in the military, government, and judicial system. Ethnic cleansing, again, 20% of Israel population is Arab Israeli. Do you know how many Jews are in Gaza? The answer is 133. That is 133 hostages being held by Hamas. And for those of you who didn't get it, the real answer is zero. Genocide, Israel is in war. While war happens, while what happens in Israel, Gaza war, is a tragedy. It is not a genocide. For reference, in World War II, only 400,000 US soldiers died, while 6 million Germans died, in which 1 million were civilians. Does this mean that the US and its allies committed genocide? On the other hand, Hamas has genocidal intent in their charter and action. Hamas is responsible for the suffering of the Palestinian people. Israel, the only Jewish state in the world, roughly the size of New Jersey, versus 22 countries in Arab League and 57 countries in the organization of Islamic Corporation. Israel is not a colonizer. Israel was decolonized from the British. And yes, for one of you that said that, every university in Gaza was destroyed because Hamas was using them as basis to launch rockets at Israel. You are racist and anti-Semitic. At least identify yourself as such and don't hide behind slogans and social justice causes. And for what it's worth, if interested, I'll be more than happy to meet with you and provide you more education on this subject. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Mindy Pines. You'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start.
Hi, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm a Richmond resident for maybe last 18 years. So many have already talked about the horrors of the war in Gaza, so I wanna address something else. I'm curious, how will we implement the divestment that you propose? I'm pretty sure the city staff almost exclusively uses Microsoft product, programs, Dell computers, CalPERS, the Richmond employees pension system, invests in all 10 of the companies that Shiva talked about. How will divesting their pensions affect our city employees? And how, and, and you all who get paid by the city and are covered by CalPERS? Many council members have used Wix for their own websites to communicate with constituents. They use Facebook, which uses Israel for their R and D. The mayor uses Facebook. Will you stop using social media, maybe create a new system to switch to, like Truth Social? Even if you're talking only about future purchases, unless you replace all your current technologies, you'll have to upgrade regularly with purchases from the forbidden companies. What will you do with all the capital expenditures you use daily to run the city? This divestment proposal is hypocritical. How will you be consistent with such sanctimonious morality? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Matop Ben Yosef. You'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanna say that I'm very saddened to hear all the speakers and all of the untruths to the best case and lies to the worst case that have been said tonight. And I'm saddened especially because if it were true, I would be supporting this resolution tonight. But these are lies or untruths or, I don't know, distorted realities. And the sad part about it is that the people suffering the most from your opinions in Richmond and your opinions elsewhere around the world are the Palestinians and the Israelis. And this is just, I can't even explain to you how frustrating it is to listen to all of this. I think that if only for the sake of making sure that you are relying on the correct information, that you should stop with all these resolutions and go and speak to both sides at the same time and hear what is really going on in Israel. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Amber Hatfield. You have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start.
Hello, uh, my name is Amber Hatfield and I'm a Richmond resident. I'm a parent. I'm raising a small child in District Five. Um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. I didn't see the timer start, so I was worried. Um, okay, so I would like to, uh, just thank the mayor and the staff for putting forward this proposal and for providing such detailed and context-rich, rich, uh, presentation. Um, in my opinion, every one of these restrictions, uh, responds to a moral call from the most vulnerable and oppressed people in not only our own communities, but in communities around the world that have been devastated by the extractive and destructive actions of global corporations that continue to profit off of the suffering of almost everyone else to some extent. But most painfully and most specifically and most disproportionately, Black, Indigenous, and people of color everywhere. Um, the people of the Global South and the people of Palestine. In, um, our destructive and racist system, money talks. And what our city should be saying with our money is that we want healthy, educated, thriving communities. We want housing. We want clean air. We want clean water and supportive rehabilitation and recreation services. Um, we want all the things that create safe communities for children to grow up in. And these things should be accessible to all children. So, uh, please, yes, uh, here in Richmond, let's collectively divest from, uh, zero-sum thinking and invest in making communities whole again. And yes, please, let the children of Gaza live. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Rogue. And the following group of speakers after that are Lori Poulsen, Emily Ross, Sol, Mia, and Danielle. Rogue, you'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for all that's been said tonight. Um, I would be there in person tonight, except I'm taking care of my mom who has cancer. And, um, since she's got diagnosed, I can only think about people who aren't able to be with their loved ones when they're sick, about people who aren't able to access medicine when they're sick, about patients who are dying because they cannot access dialysis or other necessary medical supplies. And, um, yeah. I'm also the grandkid of women who've been raped repeatedly under occupation. And the intergenerational trauma is real and sickened by the idea of running a city or profiting off of this violence. We don't have to be part of it. We can show the rest of the world, we don't have to be part of it. We can show children in Gaza, we care about them. With this decision, we can show people that we are not gonna back down from fighting for a world we know is possible, that a world can be built on caring for each other and that we can invest in the people of Richmond and keep fighting for people in Palestine. And so thank you for moving this forward. Um, we will keep fighting until Palestine is free. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Lori Poulsen. Lori, you'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start.
Thank you. Thank you, council members, for all your work. I'm a District Seven resident of 32 years. For me, there is no question that the October 7th attack by Hamas was horrific. There is no justification for that cruelty and Hamas continues to perpetuate the problem. At the same time, I feel there is no justification for the massive suppression, killing, and starvation of the Palestinian community. We can look at history, trying to evaluate how we got here, and that will keep us trying to tally who is better, who is worse, century by century, decade by decade. Anti-Semitism is real and has a deep history. With relatives and friends in Israel, this has been a difficult matter to contemplate, and I regret that this discussion occurs on Passover. But the most important thing right now is to stop perpetuating practices we don't believe in. Specifically, the indiscriminate suffering of an entire community, adults and children who are not fighters. I am grateful for tonight's excellent presentation detailing the ways that familiar and respected companies provide support for unconscionable practices, supporting apartheid, the prison industrial system, and anti-immigrant activity. Please direct city staff to review and modify the City of Richmond investment policy, eliminating the investment of city funds in industries that facilitate violence, war, oppression, and apartheid. For the sake of Israelis, for the sake of Palestinians, for the sake of everyone in this world. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Emily Ross. You'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start.
Good evening, uh, council and community. Emily Ross, Richmond resident. Thank you, Mayor Martinez, council members McLaughlin and Bana for bringing this forward, and to Ms. Mishik for that powerful and comprehensive presentation that articulated not only how various forms of oppression overlap, but the ways liberation is interconnected as well. I'm gonna speak broadly in my support of all four restrictions, but this first bit is about restriction one specifically as it relates to the honoring of Jewish American Heritage Month. Valuing the worth of human life and culture means this policy item and the proclamation are not at all at odds with each other. As a person with Ashkenazi Jewish heritage, whose ancestral migration story was largely driven by violent programs targeting Jewish people, I feel especially grateful for this item being paired with that proclamation. I don't want Richmond dollars funding war, genocide, exploitation, surveillance, or incarceration. Richmond isn't alone in utilizing the divest and vest practice to put values into action and apply pressure on particular industries, nor is it new to our dear city as detailed in the agenda report and presentation. A case can be made why this proposal is in service of the city's fiduciary duty to maintain a smart and sustainable investment portfolio. But truly, the moral argument is what matters most here. There are people on the receiving end of these industries that are suffering. And it's not worth any financial gain we could get from stock dealings with these companies. I'll close with a nod to last week's city council meeting where council action impacts on staff were discussed. This, like many items, will draw on staff time if approved. I think we should be mindful of that. And that application of staff time to this is totally worthwhile. So in the hopes that this policy is approved, gratitude in advance to the staff who will implement it. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Sol. You'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Marisol Kantu and I am a third generation Richmond resident. And I'm gonna be reading just a little bit of a letter from Reimagine Richmond, which I am a member of. So to the Richmond mayor and city council, we write to express our full support of the proposed expansion of restrictions to the City of Richmond's investment policy, Agenda Item G1. Investment discussions are a powerful tool for the city to take a stance on important ethical issues. The city has known for years that, which is why it has already divested from harmful industries like fossil fuel and tobacco. We believe the proposed set of new restrictions in, is just aligned with Richmond's values. Investor-owned companies are profiting off the exploitation and oppression of people around the world. And we do not want Richmond to be complicit in letting these companies make enormous profit from the suffering of our people. In particular, we lend our wholehearted support to new restriction number three, which would require the city to divest from companies involved in human incarceration. The prison industrial complex represents the vast networks of entities that either operate detention facilities or profit from them, some by selling products and services to prisons, others by relying the force, on the forced labor of incarcerated people. And for the sake of time, I will just go to our, our very end. And we urge you to support item G1, uh, G1, a proposal that- a proposal that puts Richmond on the right side of history and also makes good financial sense. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Mia. Mia, you'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start. Mia, if you could please unmute yourself, you'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start. Okay, moving on to Danielle. Danielle, you'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Did you guys know that the crime rate in Richmond is ninety-three point one percent higher than other US cities? I'm wondering what the wonderful Council of Richmond is doing with their time. This is the most un-American and anti-Semitic meeting I've seen thus far. You guys should be ashamed. This is brainwashing at its finest. I'm here to say that America will win, Israel will win, and we aren't going anywhere.
Okay, thank you. The next group of speakers are Esther, Sarah L., Yozra Abdelaziz, A.B., and Miriam Boozy. Esther, you'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start. Esther, you can go ahead and start.
Russia, the invader, has killed over thirty-one thousand Ukrainian soldiers and tens of thousands of civilians. The Global Slavery Index reports there are nearly one point nine million people enslaved in Russia, one point three million in Turkey, seven hundred forty thousand in Saudi Arabia, five hundred and five thousand in Afghanistan. Of them, two hundred eighty thousand Africans are held as slaves in Algeria, Libya, and Mauritania. An estimated thirty-five thousand Africans are enslaved in Sudan. About eighty thousand women from Nigeria alone are slaves in Lebanon, Mali, Oman, Saudi Arabia, and the United Arab Emirates. Arab militias continue to terrorize un-Arabized Black Africans in western Sudan, massacring men, taking the women as slaves. And after these jihadists ethnically cleanse the Black Africans' ancestral lands, they colonize them with Arab Muslims. Islamic terrorist organization Boko Haram in Nigeria murdered more than fifty thousand Christians since two thousand nine and enslaved about four thousand Christian children, particularly girls, for sexual bondage. China has more than a hundred thousand Uighurs held as slaves and presently subjects them to forced sterilization and forced abortion. That's a form of genocide. The Palestinian Central Bureau of Statistics reports fifty-nine percent of women and girls experience domestic violence there. Genital mutilation of girls is practiced nearly universally in Somalia, Egypt, and Sudan. The murder and shooting of political dissidents by Hamas has been going on for years in Gaza. Your premises for disinvestment are one-sided and false. Disinvestment should be applied to those who abuse women, mutilate women, and enslave people. In that, you should include the terrorist organization Hamas and include China, Russia, and the other countries listed in the US Department of Labor DVPRA list. Richmond should divest from companies that do business, from companies-
Time has to expand, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Sarah L. You'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start.
In twenty-twenty-two, BDS Boston created the Mapping Project, a map depicting what they considered Zionist organizations to boycott and protest in Massachusetts. This map included Jewish summer camps, Jewish disability centers, art centers, philanthropic organizations, and more. One museum on the list, for instance, was targeted simply because alongside a Palestinian artist, it extended a speaking invitation to a supporter of Israel. The BDS movement marginalizes Jewish people out of public life. It turns any tie with Israel, however weak, into a point of condemnation. Israel is home to nearly half the world's Jewish population, and there is around three thousand years of continuous historical evidence tying Jewish people to the land of Israel. Most Jewish people around the world have friends and family in Israel. Condemning any tie to Israel means condemning most Jewish people. Do you genuinely believe that most Jewish people deserve to be condemned? If you do hold that belief, consider that you likely have an anti-Semitic bias, either explicitly or implicitly. As with racism, you can be anti-Semitic without realizing it. And if you say that you don't hold that belief, I urge you to act in congruence with your explicit beliefs and reject BDS in Richmond. BDS is dangerous. Back in twenty-seventeen, the ADL reported that there was an eighty-nine percent increase in anti-Semitic incidents on college and university campuses where BDS was most active. Today, BDS isolates your Jewish citizens who are still reeling from the brutal attacks on October seventh and who are still holding their breaths as innocent hostages remain captive in Gaza. Do what is right for your entire community, including your Jewish members, and not only the loudest and most emboldened by rejecting BDS. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Yozra Abdelaziz. You'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start.
Hi, first of all, I want to thank you, Richmond City Council, for this presentation. I actually would love access to this presentation as I have personally started divesting in my retirement portfolios from companies who are profiting from genocide and violence. Personally, I don't understand any opposition to this. The motion is to not profit from violence and apartheid. If you oppose this motion, like some of the previous speakers, this means you are admitting that Israel is a violent apartheid state. So in a way, I would like to thank you for admitting that you know what the rest of us know to be true. To add this comment, I want to tell you about my husband's best friend. His mother is Palestinian and his father is Egyptian. One day in late October, he woke up to messages on his phone informing him that his whole mother's side of the family had been killed. His aunts, uncles, cousins, all of their children, his grandparents, all gone. We worked so hard for our money. To know that our tax dollars go towards killing our friends' families truly makes me sick to my core. If Richmond passes this, then they will push over the next domino, as Hayward City Council passes first. They will push over the next domino and hopefully usher in an era of divesting from violence and death. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is A.B. You'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Hi, so anti-Zionist Jew here, and I would like to say that the presentation was, like another commenter said, a masterclass in BDS, boycott, divest, sanction. Excellent. Thank you for making that publicly available. And I hope that tonight leads to Oakland and San Francisco taking more direct material action and to Berkeley doing anything at all. This is a generative choice. Flushing out the blood money from your budget allows for affirmative ethical investment and to vision for the future and to be able to share in its abundance with joy and with a clear conscience. I hope this spurs also further divestment from industries that destroy the land and Indigenous people here and to invest in reparations for the Indigenous communities here as well. Genocide and ecocide are only two different words because of colonialism. And unlike a previous commenter, it is an honor to join you on the last note of Passover. This is a holiday at its best about liberation, although this year, obviously, it has been much more about grief. And I wholeheartedly support this resolution, pass G1. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Miriam Boozy, and the following speakers after that will be Mia, Naomi Smoller, Camilla, Humzi, and Matt Jack. Miriam Boozy, you'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start.
Hi. This has been a display of intolerance, bias, misinformation, and naive oversimplification. Hamas initiated a horrific war in Gaza and Israel and continues to reject ceasefire attempts. There is terrible suffering on both sides, and words matter. Genocide. On April nineteenth, twenty-twenty-four, Iran launched a hundred and twenty ballistic missiles, thirty cruise missiles, and a hundred and seventy killer drones at Israel, about the size of New Jersey. Imagine that happening over New Jersey. This is an attempted genocide, which a speaker said is, yes, the deliberate killing with the aim of destroying a nation. Thank God defensive weapons developed by Lockheed Martin and others, Jordanian aircraft and others prevented that. Another word, indigenous. Did you know that over half the population of Israel is comprised of Jews indigenous to the Middle East and North Africa? Most of them were first out of the only country they had known for hundreds and hundreds and thousands of years, and the only country to take them was Israel. Would you send them back to Iraq, Iran, Syria? Are they colonialists? Nine hundred thousand Jews were displaced, as were seven hundred fifty thousand Arabs. Free Palestine. When you say in Israeli towns such as Kirayat Gavah, well within the nineteen forty-seven boundaries, that partitioned the British-controlled land into Jewish and Arab states, when you say it is illegal, you are advocating for the destruction of Israel. I've heard tonight advocacy for the dismantling of Israel. That is a second Holocaust. Arabs have rejected a two-state solution five times since nineteen thirty-seven, even before nineteen forty-seven. Yes, free Palestine. Free Palestine from the Iran proxy Hamas.
Thank you. The next speaker is Mia. Mia, you'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start. The next speaker is Mia. You'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start. You'll unmute yourself. Okay, moving on to Naomi Smoller. Naomi, you'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna start with a poem here, and this one is about process of English enclosure, where the common land was fenced off and turned into property. It's a seventeenth-century folk poem. "The law locks up..." Oh, by the way, I'm Naomi. I'm with East Bay DSA. I'm in Castro Valley. "The law locks up the man or woman who steals the goose off the common, but leaves the greater villain loose who steals the common from the goose. The law demands that we atone when we take things we do not own, but leaves the lords and ladies fine who takes the things are yours and mine. The poor and wretched don't escape if they conspire the law to break. This must be so, but they endure those who conspire to make the law. The law locks up the man or woman who steals the goose from off the common, and geese will still a common lack till they go and steal it back." And tonight, Columbia, we see what happens when they try to steal it back. They are met with incredible force and state violence. More cops than many folks reporting from Columbia have ever seen in one place. Folks getting pushed into buildings, the entrances blocked by cops. The dean of journalism fired for standing up for his students for their courageous coverage. And when Palestinians try to take their commons back, we see what they're met with. Unimaginable, unimaginable violence, no different than Warsaw. We have a responsibility to take it back together, and I'm proud of the council for what they've done tonight.
Yeah. The next speaker is Camilla. You'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, City of Richmond, for being the moral compass of the Bay Area. Putting divestment on the agenda helps raise the bar for city councils, board of supervisors, board of education, human rights commissions across the Bay Area and across the country. Please vote yes on the recommendation to divest from companies doing business in settler-colonial Israel at the expense of local Palestinians who are denied their basic human rights through brutal settler-colonialism and apartheid, and now through genocide. We are struggling to get the president and the Congress to stop this madness, and that's because it's all about profit and greed. Profit without conscience is a recipe for disaster, not just for the victims of the genocide, but also for those who committed. There would be no genocide without the unprecedented and unconditional US support of settler-colonial Israel. And that's with our money without our will, with US arms against US law and against international law, and with US diplomacy against seventy percent of the population who are saying no to genocide. It's through divestment initiatives like these that apartheid regimes, like in South Africa, was defeated. And it's with your leadership that the genocide in Gaza will be stopped, and the apartheid regime in the West Bank will be broken once and for all. If we don't stop the genocide against Palestinians, we will all become Palestinians. And we are already seeing how US students are being treated on US campuses around the country. Free Palestine. Please divest from criminal businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Humza, and the following group of speakers after that are Gold A., Zara Baloo, Devin, Emmy Yoko Young, and Avi Desai. Humza, you'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start.
Hi, can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. Harmful, unregulated surveillance investigative technologies not only increase the risk of wrongful convictions and military-grade violence, but also strips away our basic dignity and humanity, entrenching even more deeply the prison industrial complex, whether at home or afar. In my work as a community organizer, I've seen, at a sidewalk level, the influence of surveillance capitalism on the autonomy of people and their health and life outcomes. All this happens every day without any just disciplinary action, as the same actors who create this violence ultimately police themselves. We have an opportunity to change that. In this historic moment of student protests across the country, where cops are amassing to brutalize our families and friends, Richmond can stand out as a model for municipal political economies everywhere that want to affirm peace by saying no to the corporations that destroy lives here at home and profit in the genocide and apartheid that has killed thirty-four thousand five hundred thirty-five Palestinians, wounded seventy-seven thousand seven hundred four more, and has put the bodies of tens of thousands under the rubbles of hundreds of destroyed buildings. These proposed investment policies will help ensure that we are not complicit in the technology and industries that push further policing, incarceration, surveillance, and punitive measures. And I think it should really be a point of unity among everyone that we want less weapons in general destroying lives around the world. And in doing so, the least we can do is take a stance tonight and tell the world we choose the joy and laughter and hope of innocents, our families and friends from Richmond to Gaza, to the whirring and humming of drones, missiles, and warplanes. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Gold A. You'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start.
Hello, hi. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
My name is Gulet Roblet. I'm a father of five children, a black man. It's really very devastating and sad to hear that something that's very simple and uncomplicated that we're making is so complicated. And I'm really applaud for Richmond City, the fact that it's the first city who did the ceasefire back in October. And I believe you will be the first city also who take that leadership called divestment. We're living in a Silicon Valley where most of the companies working in the IT life, that most of them do support one side, which is the genocide which is going on in Israel. So therefore, it will take the leadership. It will take a lot of guts, a lot of study, a lot of your own study. But I'm with you, and you guys are doing it really brave and amazing. There's be a lot of backfire, just like the students, what they facing it, and imagine what Gaza children going through. Knowing that Richmond is the first city, who can they send the message, knowing that we are supporting them? So divestment, that's the only way we have option right now. And I'm sure back in nineteen eighties, South Africa, I remember in Oakland, was one of the first few cities that did allow Mandela to arrive, where every city was saying that, no, we're not gonna allow. So this is the grassroots. Let's go Richmond. You have a lot of support, and you're doing amazing things, and just this is the beginning, and go for it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Zara Baloo. You'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start. Zara Baloo, if you'll unmute yourself, you have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start. Okay, moving on to Devin. Devin, you'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start.
Hello, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Hi, okay, so, um, thank you, Richmond, for taking leadership on this. A very historic gesture for justice for folks who are affected by these investments of these companies. I'm really shocked at some of the comments tonight. Um, I understand, like, there's people hurting on both sides, but there should be no reason that people use language like "Israel will win," and, you know, that just disregards all the families affected by this. And I'm heartbroken, but also hopeful that things will get better on both sides. There needs to be an immediate ceasefire. Um, there needs to be, you know, no more bloodshed of children, families. I just, I, I, I feel for everyone on this conflict, and I've been listening for a long time, so. You know, you look at history, and we see issues that are currently happening that kind of relate to our history, and we always talk about being on the right side. When people have committed genocides in the past, we think today that we could have stopped something, we could have done something. And we all need to think about who we want to be in about thirty to forty years if we're still here. And I want to be someone who can sleep at night knowing I did not support that. So, thank you all for speaking up tonight, even though comments that I didn't really agree with. Um, it says democracy, we are able to speak. And I just implore you all, stay strong, and thank you, Richmond, for taking leadership on this and being brave. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you. The next speaker is Emmy Yoko Young. You'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start.
Hi, my name is Emmy Yoko Young. Um, thank you to the, the city of Richmond for your endless commitment to justice and for standing in solidarity with Palestine, especially when other jurisdictions were afraid to do so and are still afraid to do so. I'm calling to send my support for item G1 and divesting from mass incarceration and genocide, and show an international solidarity with our Palestinian siblings. As mentioned in the presentation, we have seen so many times in history that the BDS movement has been really effective. As mentioned before, we've seen this in apartheid South Africa. We've seen this here in California with the farm worker movement in Monterey County. And we've seen this time and time again. To directly withhold funds to these genocidal companies is a way to exercise our collective power and to send a clear message that we are taking a stance and will not feel the massacre of Palestinians. As Danny Lou Hamer has said, "None of us are free until all of us are free." And so thank you for, for taking the stance.
Thank you. The next speaker will be Navid Desai, and the following group of speakers after that will be Zara Baloo, Leela Shera, Iba, Fatima Abdel Wahab, and Vish. Navid Desai, you'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Asma, and, um, on the Zoom is actually my husband's name, but I'm gonna yield my time to my daughter.
Okay.
Get closer.
Hello there. My name is Zoya. I'm an eleven-year-old South Asian Muslim, and I live in Contra Costa County. I wanted to thank your courage and bravery, Mayor Eduardo Martinez. You and your council made history back in October, and you now can be on the right side of history again. As a child who has wanted to be president of the United States, a country I call my home since I was just four years old, I have been so sad watching all the children, just like me, killed and injured by bombs or caught under the rubble. I cannot stand the fact that the leaders of my country, who I count on, are so blindsided by the propaganda, by power and money, that they have not only done nothing to stop what's happening, but have doubled down and sent billions of dollars that should be going towards my education and well-being to further this genocide. Today, you have inspired me again, and I believe that this policy will truly help every child that has survived this atrocity for generations to come. You can't hear the cry of the thousands of kids like me, but today you will heal, you hear my cry for the children who deserve the life I have. The number of people who have died has reached almost thirty-five thousand, which is thirty-five thousand too much. Thank you for answering the call of thousands of students like me all over our country and all over our world, asking our leaders to take real action to stop the killing and violence. You are the start to a free Palestine. Vote yes to, to divest.
Thank you. Um, next speaker is Zara Baloo. You'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start. Zara Baloo, you'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start. Moving on to Leela Shera. You'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start.
Hi, yes, thank you. Uh, my name is Lila. I'm a Richmond resident, and I was just present uh, earlier with my two young children. You may have seen and heard them. I since have had the immense privilege to put my children to bed safely while they will rest peacefully, warm, and in their beds. As I tried to corral them and keep them under control and reduce disruptions to the meeting, I thought about the tens of thousands of families mourning the needless murders of their own precious children in Palestine. I thought of the tens of thousands of parents who love to be, who would love to be annoyed by their children to have to chase them, to keep them quiet in a social setting. Yet the opportunities for the challenges of parenthood, as well as the innumerable joys, have been stolen from too many families. As a mother, every time I see a picture of a murdered baby, I think about their families. I imagine if it was one of my own babies, and how would I would ever cope with the pain of the senseless loss of a child? Just imagine if your children were murdered, and your neighbor's kids, and nearly all the kids on your block, or in your children's class, or in your apartment building. I think of the immense rage that I would feel, and I really can't say what else I think in this regard. I think about the tens of thousands of Palestinian children made orphans, their parents senselessly murdered. We all keep saying thirty-five to forty thousand Palestinians dead, but this number has stayed the same for weeks. The ability to monitor and record deaths has been decimated as well, and the true estimated death toll is likely closer to a hundred thousand. Cannot fathom the pain they feel, and the tears I shed at each image are drops compared to the tears that must stream from their eyes. I'm simultaneously furious that my tax dollars work to enable this genocide and continued apartheid. During a time when I feel so much anger and embarrassment at the U.S. government, I'm proud of the legacy Richmond has of a city of pride and purpose, and Richmond's leadership in calling for a ceasefire, and historical record in divesting from apartheid South Africa, which Richmond was right then and is right now. As a Richmond resident, a mother, a human, a democratic socialist, and a tax-paying citizen, I fully support this agenda item and encourage the council to vote, vote yes. Free Palestine. Since I have a few more seconds, I just want to respond. Um, like Yusra said, I do not understand any opposition to this. Iran launched a retaliatory attack due to Israel bombing its embassy, and the opposition seems to think that history started on October seventh, yet we know better. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Sabah. You'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start.
Salaam alaikum to everyone except Zionists. Um, thank you for the mayor and the rest of the council members for standing on business. Oh, can you guys hear me? My timer's not moving. Oh, I'm sorry. I have nothing prepared except vibes. Free Palestine. Um, I one hundred percent, a hundred percent, on all my ten toes, support a divestment resolution, and we should have been divesting years ago, but, you know, better late than never. Also, I want to highlight my connection to Richmond, because you'll get a lot of Zionists who just show up to the same cities acting like they live everywhere. I don't live in Richmond, to be transparent. I live in the peninsula, but I was working at the Public Defender's Office in Richmond last summer for months. So I was getting to know the community. Um, besides that, we have Berkeley, USF, and San Francisco State University, and Stanford in the Bay Area who have launched student encampments. I personally think if you're on the opposition, opposition of students and any type of movement, you really need, really to reevaluate your values and your morals and what you're really opposing. Um, we are two hundred and six days into a genocide. The ICJ ruled that Israel is committing genocidal acts. I'm not gonna respond to any Zionists and their delusional arguments, like you guys really sound deranged. Seek mental help immediately. Um, I don't want to take up too much time. Please divest. I already think you guys are going to, so I don't need to say much. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Fatima Abdel Wahab. You'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name's Fatima Abdel Wahab. Uh, salaam alaikum. I, I want to thank all of you. Um, well, maybe not all of you, because I don't think all of us are on the same page in terms of supporting the ceasefire, which you guys did back in October, um, which I am so thrilled to have seen this happen, uh, and, and shocked, to be honest, with all the propaganda we have been fed from grade school with learning just about the Holocaust in schools, but never about the Nakba and the Naxa, nothing about the Palestinian struggle. Not to dismiss the Holocaust and what they have endured. Um, but it doesn't, uh, uh, it doesn't allow us to be blind to what is happening to us here today. I am so happy that the universities are stepping up, and I really hope that you guys, um, you know, really diva, like, divest in your guys' ways and your capabilities as it was presented to us tonight. We are not like Hayward, uh, which I am proud to be a part of in terms of living here as a homeowner. Um, I'm, I, I'm very upset that we couldn't call for a ceasefire, but I think what's most important outside of calling for a ceasefire is you guys, us pleading with you guys to really divest, um, for the sake of humanity. We are finally waking up after so many years of slumber. Yes, the Gen Z that the people on the news want to paint as, um, cruel, unintelligent individuals are doing what needs to be done. And, um, I, I really applaud you guys for calling for the ceasefire, but please do uh, call for the divestment that, uh, the city of Richmond is capable of doing. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Vish. Vish, you'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start.
Yes, hi, uh, my name is Vish. Um, thank you for this opportunity. I am a member of East Bay DSA, Bay Area Labor for Palestine, and I am the elected treasurer for the Bay Area Legal Aid Workers, a labor union affiliated with UAW Local twenty-two tweet three-twenty, a unit of legal services workers. Um, both, uh, the Bay Area Legal Aid Workers and Local twenty-three-twenty overwhelmingly endorsed the boycott divestment and sanctions movement earlier this year. And I am here to express my and the labor movement's, uh, full-throated support for this resolution. I implore you to adopt, uh, I think, all four or five options that were laid forth in the presentation. Um, I'm speaking on behalf of a labor movement that is increasingly enraged by the impunity with which Israel has oppressed Palestinian civilians for the past seventy-six years. I speak for a movement that opposes the oppression of our fellow workers and their families as they attempt to cross the U.S.-Mexico border, because the U.S. trade policies have destroyed their livelihoods for decades. I speak for a movement that opposes the criminalization of communities of color and profiting from locking up black and brown bodies. Um, thank you for identifying and calling out these intersecting harms, and for having the courage and moral clarity once again to set a precedent for other electives to hopefully follow your lead. Um, I also want to point out that, uh, tomorrow, in a few hours, uh, May first is gonna come along, which is International Workers' Day, May Day. Um, and I want to point out that, uh, Israel, in line with its genocidal campaign against the people of Gaza, has bombed and destroyed, um, the head of the Palestinian Trade Federation in Gaza for the third time this decade. Um, it has suspended and terminated contracts of thousands of workers in the Gaza Strip. Um, so, um, thank you, and we hope, uh, you will pass this measure, um, and, uh, give us some good news for May Day. Thank you all.
Thank you. And the last group of speakers will be Zara Baloo, Vincent Yanello, Sima Badar, Val, Anne, and Matthew Lewis. Zara Baloo, you'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start. Zara Baloo, you'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start. Okay, moving on to Vincent Yanello. You'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start. Vincent Yanello, if you can unmute yourself.
Thank you. Um, I had a public comment. Um, Richmond was the first city in the country to pass a ceasefire resolution, as many have said. An incredibly important act that has led to a domino effect of cities passing such resolutions. I think most realize at this point that a ceasefire is no longer sufficient. Even a permanent ceasefire would not properly ensure the safety of Palestinians from the rapidly fascist regime in Israel. Divestment ensures we don't continue to support the regime, even if this current round of ethnic cleansing starts to fade from the news, although I hope sincerely it does not. Divestment was the death knell of the apartheid state of South Africa. Once divestment was widely adopted, the apartheid state started to collapse as it lacked sufficient funding to continue its government. This strategy is crucially important in the fight against apartheid, South Africa's successor, Israel. Nelson Mandela himself said, "We know too well that our freedom is incomplete without the freedom of Palestinians." He also said, "All of us need to do more in supporting the struggle of the people of Palestine for self-determination." Mandela's political party, the current governing party of South Africa, has made it clear, in their case, with the ICJ, that Israel is doing the same thing that Afrikaners did in apartheid South Africa. In fact, right now, Nelson Mandela's grandson is on a ship called the Freedom Flotilla with hundreds of others to attempt to deliver desperately needed aid to the people of Gaza. They are quite literally risking their lives since Israel has a long storied history of slaughtering peaceful activists. What does the Freedom Flotilla have to do with these restrictions on the docket today? If Israel decides to massacre those on the flotilla, then it will have been done with weapons from companies at this point that Richmond has the capacity to partially own. Considering that, please vote to draft these restrictions and divest from all of these movements, or all of these companies that are related to BDS, as well as the others with prison reform, uh, Board of Security, and the others. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, the next speaker is Sima Badar. You'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, I just wanted to come and say thank you so much, Richmond City Council, council members. Um, it's just amazing to see that you guys, what you guys are doing. You were the first to put the resolution, and now you're bringing the divestment to the table. Um, I'm just so, so, um, I'm at a loss of words. Everyone has said everything that I could possibly say. So I'm just here to thank you and to tell you that, um, we really, really applaud you for being on the right side of history. Um, you know, it's, it's really, um, I don't know how to put in words. Um, like, thirty, over thirty thousand Palestinians have been killed in a span of just a few months. And, um, to see the, the hate in people's hearts and, and not being able to see, um, you know, the genocide that is unfolding in front of our eyes, and to not just, just sit back and not do anything, um, is just beyond me. So I really, really applaud you for taking the stance, and I, um, I wholeheartedly support, um, you know, um, this resolution for divesting. And I thank you so much for, um, everything that you're doing, for being the pioneers, for, you know, be, for showing the community the right way to lead. Um, thank you once again.
Thank you. The next speaker is Val. Val, you'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, hi, um, I just want you to look around in your audience and count how many Jews you had tonight. And ask yourselves why, why we didn't come there. I can answer, and I want you to sleep well after that, because we feel unsafe. I actually was on a Zoom meeting with a ceasefire resolution. I could not sleep the whole night. You allowed hate and bigotry to be there, and you were the first. Are you trying to win a trophy to be the first for dividing the communities? None of us came because None of us came because we feel unsafe, because the audience ostracizes us. You, the mayor, should be ashamed of yourself. There was one speaker, pro-Israel speaker today, and what did you say? You made a laugh out of him saying, "Anybody can say nonsense here." I really, really think this is bullying, and this is not what leaders do. Do not divest. This is dividing our community. You have so much to take care of Richmond, which is one of the highest in crime, but you put your noses into foreign affairs, which is not okay. You have enough on your plate to do with your city. You divide the community, and every city council that passed a resolution, that county has very high antisemitic incidents. So you have to pat yourselves on the shoulders and say, "Thank you," but I don't know how you sleep with yourselves after that. I yield my time.
Thank you. Next speaker is Anne, and after that is Math- Matthew Lewis. Anne, you'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start.
Thank you. I am, first of all, beyond disappointed that we're having this conversation on the last night of Passover. That is a tremendous sign of disrespect to a particular community. Mayor, you have become a face of antisemitism. I am at a loss for words that this is happening in my country, in my area, in twenty-twenty-four. You sit up there, you all do, and have the opportunity to bring the community together in some way. And instead, you have continued to choose a highly divisive matter that you know, you've a hundred percent know what the outcome is going to be, that you are dividing the community and the, and the communities in the area. All eyes are on you and what you're doing, and this is not the word of leadership. This is a, this, this is the act of an antisemitic, blatantly antisemitic leadership. As to the coined, the words that we're hearing, genocide. In nineteen forty-eight, there were one million people living in Gaza. There are five million today. I'd like someone to answer how that's genocide. In nineteen forty-eight, there were seven hundred and fifty thousand Jews living in the surrounding Arab countries. Do you want to guess how many Jews remain in those Arab countries? They were all kicked out. Everyone wants peace. What if El Cerrito came to Richmond and said, "Our intent is to kill every one of you"? And then the world harassed you for defending yourself. That's what you're doing to the Jewish people. Please think about your actions and the impact it's happening on the Jewish community.
Thank you. The next speaker and the last speaker is Matthew Lewis. You'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start.
So first of all, those last two speakers are just racist, and I think the second-to-last speaker really showed how weak the dynasty's case is, that he was saying, "Oh, how dare you, mayor, condemn a, a literal Trump supporter, a man who literally wearing a Trump hat." I believe I remember him from the ceasefire meeting as well. Um, you know, that's how we could is, how dare people boo a Trump supporter? Um, and, you know, my name's Matthew. Um, I'm a proud Jew. I'm a proud member of the Democratic Socialists of America, uh, which proudly endorses BDS and proudly supports ceasefire resolutions um, and, um, uh, divestment resolutions such as this one. Um, it is absolutely crucial that we pass this. I'm so glad to see this. I can think about, was very involved in stint government, uh, when I was at UC Berkeley. Because the first meeting I went to was divestment resolution, which was, God, twelve years ago. Um, and the fact you see a city government doing this now is something that was hard to imagine twelve years ago. I do want to correct one thing that the mayor said, though, at the beginning of this meeting, which was that he said, "Everybody has a conscience." And unfortunately, as we've seen from a loud vocal, but small, small, but racist minority of people, not everyone has a conscience. The people who are opposing this are people who support genocide. There are people who are more than happy to put Jews in danger by saying that Israel, Jews like me, in danger by saying that, "Oh, Israel's doing this for Jews, that Israel represents the Jews, that Jewish safety requires that we murder Palestinians, that we murder Palestinian children." And let's also note that murdering Palestinian adults is also horrible. And, but, but why are they doing that? Because what they, these people who are racist care about the most is they care about murdering Palestinians in order to have Jewish supremacy, just like there were segregationists like George Wallace in the United States, who cared most about, um, white supremacy here. Um, it's ending segregation was divided, not re-electing Donald Trump was divided.
And that was the last public speaker.
I want to thank all speakers, uh, both for and against. Um, and, uh, I've noticed that the narrative basically starts at some beginning point, and whatever point they begin with uh, defines how the narrative's going to go. I noticed that, uh, Zionist sympathizers, uh, continue to invoke the British as the arbitrators of land disposition, but weren't the British occupiers, uh, uh, occupiers who gave occupied land to a new set of occupiers? You know, it, it depends on where you start at. You know, the British had no business there. And the British are the ones who set the apartheid situation rolling. So we have to give credit where credit is due. Uh, and we have to, uh, know that this is an item for responsible investment. Um, we have a president who warned us against the industrial military complex. And the industrial military complex, uh, needs war to make profits. So as long as they continue to promote war, they continue to make profits. Uh, for instance, I was amazed to find out that, uh, a missile, a Reaper missile costs twenty million dollars. So every time a Reaper missile is sent and blows up, that's twenty million dollars down the drain. And that's not counting the destruction that that missile creates. We have people who are invested in war, and they don't care about you, they don't care about me, all they care about is a profit. And this div- divestment is to break that chain so that we can begin to invest in people and not in war and not in missiles and not in destruction. So, uh, Vice Mayor.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to thank, uh, the mayor, uh, council member McGlaughlin and council member Bana for bringing this item and having this discussion. Um, I love budgets, and this is, investment, uh, is also a great topic to think because our budget, uh, where we put the money represent our values. I just wanted to start, uh, with saying that as an immigrant wh- whose family lives outside US, I would love a city council that speaks about my country, particularly if US foreign policies are supporting the killing of civilians, genocide, and collective punishment. Richmond is a very diverse city that many of us who didn't born here call home right now. And the council needs to recognize all of us right now, or Palestinian, Palestinian residents are experiencing incredible pain and suffering, and we are here to say we see you. And you belong in our community. And because of that, we are using the local power that we have to speak up against this horror. So when somebody said that speaking against genocide or calling for a ceasefire, um, or this, this invest from corporation that profit from war and suffering is no city business, I will say you are wrong. This is city business because Palestinian residents are part of our community, and they belong here, and we see that the suffering is really greater than other communities in this moment. This particular item is very clear, and it's about showing with action our values. I always say that our budget represent our values. Where we put our money shows what we care about. Today, we are showing with this local action that we value life, we, we value our immigrant residents or residents who are coming home and deserve a second chance to belong here as well. We chose to condemn wars and any form of collective punishment. The time is calling us to not be complicit in genocide. I also, and I, I, I want to also call to our representative, uh, Gary Mendy and know what he stand on because at that level also is, is, is so important. So we are doing this at the local level, but we need to escalate it too, also. And, and we have a representative, so we need to call on him and see what he stands on this issue. But today we are here, uh, doing this local effort, and I, and you need to have teeth, isn't, it, we, we cannot just, uh, go and say, "Oh, yeah, we in, this invest, but we don't have control over." So I have some questions, uh, for the presenter and for finance staff, um, about this. And, and I think like, I want to make a, a, a little correction because the, the last investment report was the February one, and in the LEAF, we don't, we have thirty-one point four million dollars. And, and so it's, it's like the pool and catch and investment is three hundred and twenty million dollars right now. Um, but we are also, we, we are talking about LEAF. But Shiva, uh, you, you, you show, um, I just wanted to understand because you show, um, an slide where there was different investment portfolios, uh, and the rate of return, and we saw that L- L- L A, L A I F, I don't know, life, uh, it has lower, eh, return than the others. Could you, eh, explain more about that?
Yes.
So why we, because what I want to understand is why we are in Le- life, uh, if other, uh, other institution or other things had more high return.
I imagine that finance staff can speak to the value of being, um, with LEAF. Um, my understanding is that, um, and here they come. Um, so I'll just say that the graph I included was taken from, um, the LEAF site um, and was describing how returns compare to, to other metrics. I will say, and again, I know finance staff can speak to this better, but the, the values underpinning LEAF are, you know, that there's liquidity and, um, safety and transparency in investments. And so, um, I think the sort of typical understanding is that the more safer an investment is, the lower the return. Um, but I will let finance staff speak to that and so perhaps KCRT can pull it up, um, if they're still available.
Good evening. Andrea Miller, Director of Finance. Vice Mayor Jimenez, if you may, can you please repeat the question?
Um, so in one of, uh, the slides in the presentation, um, maybe KC, KCRT can help us to look at the presentation. There was a, a graphic, uh, where, uh, it shows the return of investment and life. Or if I am pronouncing it well, sorry, my pronunciation is not perfect. Um, yes, this, uh, it shows, uh, lower return right now, so I just wondering, uh, what are the other two, and if you can ta- speak more why we are in this one versus the other that right now have higher return rates?
So the, the graphic that you're currently reviewing on the screen shows, um, year-over-year investment earnings in the LEAF investment pool. And it shows that right now, um, when you compare to the prior years, we're at record highs in the investment earnings in the pool, year-over-year. Um, so it's comparing to the federal funds rate and the Standard and Poor's, uh, GIP rate, what we're getting in the pool. And so the PMIA is the investment pool that LEAF invests in. So if you look, we're, we're doing really well year-over-year. When you look at the earlier years, twenty nineteen.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so I, I just thought that LEAF is, was the blue one when it was presented, so thank you for the clarification. So I think it is, yeah? Is, is the blue one Le- LEAF?
The blue one is PMIA, which is LEAF.
Okay, so, so my question is, in that sense, um, it compares to other things, why we, we are using LEAF if, if compared with others has like, right now, lower return?
The city has been a participant of LEAF since nineteen eighty-eight, um, as is the case with five hundred and seventy-five of the four hundred and eighty-two California cities. It is a liquid pool, so, um, it is fiscally prudent to hold your liquid funds in an interest-bearing account. Um, the reason why there's not a combination of a, of a diversified investment portfolio currently, as has been the case in prior years. Um, if you look at the city's investment reports on our website, May of twenty eighteen was the last time there was a more diversified portfolio that had a variation of different holdings. And that's because, um, with, over time, as those securities matured and the staff with more expertise in managing the active investment portfolio had retired. And as you know, there was a lot of transition within the finance department over the last several years.
Okay.
We've always held funds in LEAF. Right now, we're just holding the, pretty much all of our portfolio in Cal Trust primarily and a portion of it in LEAF.
Okay, so is, is that room for looking at what, what could be better for us? Thank you. Um, another question that I have is, um, we, like, what we want is to have, uh, this investment from work and a corporation that profit from work and all, all of what we talk, masking and how, if, like, if we pass that, how is that we ensure that these policies with the current system that we have that is not managed by us, these policies will follow?
Councilmember, Vice Mayor Jimenez, that's a really good question, and based on the policy direction that we received this evening, we'll be making adjustments and bringing those back to city council for consideration.
So I, I just wanted to understand because, so in this moment, eh, it seems to me that we don't, because we don't have that much control over that investment, it will be really hard for staff to guarantee that these policies are going to be implemented. Is that true?
To a degree. Um, again, it is an investment pool. Um, we do share our investment policy with, uh, LEAF as well as Cal Trust, and they acknowledge receipt and then compliance with our, to the degree possible, uh, with our investment policy. Um, so the decision this evening will be something we'd have to certainly update.
And my, my question, and, and this is the last question, I, I, I think like, my, my question goes to, um, the, the, the statement that I said, like, we don't want, um, these to just be, these policies just to be policies that don't have that don't have any teeth. And it's just kind of like, feel good and show, like, we actually want to follow through with this. So, I hope that we were making decisions tonight, not to change it right now because it will be kind of like, from one day to another, but we need to really look into, make sure that our investment is in right with our values and this invest, and that we are able to this invest and the staff is able to guarantee that that this investment is happening. So, I just, this is great because we have never had, or I have never had this opportunity to talk about the investment portfolio in this way. And this item just bring the light of, like, are we really following the other policies that City Council racially has passed, like, don't invest in fossil fuel, don't invest in like, eyes and surveillance. And it seems to me that we need better checks and balance and able, enable the staff to really look into what other options so it guarantees that these policies that we pass are real. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you all for being here and sharing your perspectives. And thank you for the presentation and for all the information. I wholeheartedly agree that we should be divesting from anything war, oppression, apartheid. This is, all goes counter to what we should be doing as humans. But I do have some questions as, using a word that Vice Mayor just mentioned, more than a good feeling, right? We want to make sure that we put teeth. We want to make sure that we're doing the right thing and that we're not doing it incorrectly. Something that was mentioned was BDS. That there, is this going to be part of it? And then, what is the risk that the city will be taking should the state find that we participated in BDS?
So, you know, I, under the mayor's direction, I crafted this policy. And if I use the term BDS in my presentation, then that was not intentional. In, you know, as a city, we don't have power to sanction. And nowhere in the policy does it mention anything about boycotting, which is specifically not purchasing certain brands. And so, we are suggesting divesting from certain companies if we're currently investing in them. But divestment is a word that just means pulling money out of certain investments and is used with fossil fuels. It's used with other instances of funding prisons and so on and so forth. So, I think that the use of the term BDS is a highly sensitive one. And it's one that certainly, there's a lot of interest in bringing repercussions on people who use it, including, you know, municipalities and other agencies. And so, this is an item that is to, you know, as per the mayor's direction for me, to think about, does the city want to invest in companies that support arms manufacturers, the prison industry, border, you know, border surveillance and criminalization of migrants, and also companies that support illegal Israeli oppression and occupation. And so, you know, I think that, so that's a very long answer to say. I imagine that there are plenty of people who could say this is BDS. I imagine that that's true. I would say this is a divestment and investment item.
Thank you. Thank you. I know it's a complicated answer, which is why it took a while. It's not as easy as, as one could just read from the law that is in there. Something that we could easily do instead of divesting is, and the terminology here, investing, divesting, divesting is not investing. By purchasing something, we are investing in that company. If a company has no customers, there's no company. So, why aren't we talking about not purchasing things? And that also includes, I want to put this question out, not just for the city, but for people's personal 401K, personal retirement accounts, personal day-to-day items. WIX is one that comes to mind. These are actionable, physical things, not just feel-good, but we can actually do something with those versus trying to divest. And it sounds like divesting, we have really very little because it's, we're purchasing in a group. So, we can't just pull our money out of it. So, it sounds like it's a lot more complicated to divest than to just not invest.
Councilmember, it sounds like you're advocating for a boycott, which is part of BDS.
I am trying to figure out, right? Because if it's, there's no teeth, what is it that we're actually trying to do at the end of the day? And then also, part of the agenda and the items on there, if we're looking to do companies that promote genocide, why aren't we looking at other countries as well? China being one of them?
I urge any council member to bring forward investment restrictions they're interested in. My understanding from, you know, the mayor who I work for, our office is particularly concerned about the ongoing genocide of the Palestinian people right now. And that is something that we have moral urgency around. That's not to say that there isn't urgency around other genocides. And I think it would be wonderful to think about other human rights abuses. But, you know, for our office, what is happening to the Palestinian people is repugnant and of urgent matter for us.
If I might, I'm sure that these companies that sell drones, that sell missiles, aren't concerned about who they sell them to. I'm sure that if we traced the ownership of any particular missile, you would find that our arms make it pretty much anywhere people have money to buy them. This is not necessarily against any government. It's against all governments that promote genocide, that promote oppression, that promote apartheid. So, I don't care who they are, where they are, if they are doing harm to the people around them. They are wrong and we need to divest from them. It's really difficult, as I said before, because of the military-industrial complex to abort ourselves from it. I mean, we would have to get, we would have to stop drinking Coca-Cola. We'd have to stop drinking Pepsi. We would have to stop eating Quaker Oats. We would have to, we would have to stop eating Kentucky Fried Chicken. There's, there is so much money going into war from so many different angles. Our report showed how health care is making money off of people in prison by providing lower than adequate medical health care. That's unconscionable. We also need to recognize that whatever we do, in whatever capacity, we need to stop the wheels that support war, that brings destruction. I mean, we're talking about climate. Do you think that every bomb that blows up helps our climate crises?
No.
It doesn't. It creates more pollution. And if we spent all the money on building instead of bombing, we would have a more beautiful world in which everyone could thrive. And that's what we're trying to do with divestment. And if we could do more, we would do it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, it sounds like we might need to edit this to include China and other countries based on the.
No, maybe you can bring that item in another meeting.
We will have to look at that then, making sure that we're putting all of our money in the, where our mouth is and in the right places. For the state audit, Ms. Kurl, if you can help me out here, how would, would this affect us in the audit in any way?
Not that I'm aware of. As we, after we see the final motion this evening, we will, staff will evaluate this. So, City Manager's Office, Finance Staff, and the City Attorney's Office. And then, we'll return back to City Council with an update.
Perfect. Thank you. I mean, I'm looking just through the list. And I know that, Shiva, you were mentioning some of the reasons why some are in there or not. I'm just, some of the other ones, I mean, they just seem a lot more worse than some of the ones that are on the list. Just how come those didn't quite make the list?
I am, I would highly encourage the council to expand the list, provided. I, you know, this was a starting place for consideration. I think that, and this may speak to your earlier point or sort of question, Councilmembers Zapata, I think that one thing many people have found disturbing through this conflict is the extent to which our country supports the violence that's happening in Gaza right now. And so, if, if you notice, I think almost all companies on that list are United States companies. They're not Israeli companies. I think there's a couple. And, you know, so, and part of to the question about our investment policy around certain foreign corporations, you know, so for instance, to include a divestment from Chinese companies, for instance, that are complicit in, you know, state violence. I did not see on any of the divestment lists that I looked at, and I think I looked at about fifteen different lists. I didn't see any Chinese companies that are listed on, you know, the NASDAQ or anything like that, that are available for us to invest in. And so, I think, that's a long way of saying, I think this list could certainly be expanded. There are many companies, so many companies, that are intertwined with incarceration, occupation, surveillance. And so, you know, obviously, I'm not on council, but I think that if council wants to expand the list, there is certainly no shortage of villains, unfortunately.
Thank you. Thank you for that. No further questions for now. Thank you.
Councilmember Urbana.
I don't have any questions. I have a comment. Is it the time?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Thank you. So, we started this meeting, like any other meeting, with a pledge of allegiance that says, "With liberty and justice for all," I would like to start by wishing liberty and justice for all citizens of the world. I am proud to co-sponsor this agenda item. This agenda item is about prisoners, is about immigrants, is about Palestinians. It is anti-apartheid, and it is against genocide and war crimes. But more than anything fundamentally, it is about us and our humanity. This is to affirm that we do not want to be accomplices to these crimes. Carrying for peace, human rights, justice, and equity is a shared value across all religions. I deeply respect our common humanitarian values, reflected in the principles of all major religions, including Judaism, Christianity, and Islam. These common humane values form the foundation of our collective conscience. This agenda item centers on these values, emphasizing our moral obligation and social responsibility, whether we openly acknowledge it or not. I am pleased that the city of Richmond has recognized the issues of slavery in prisons, the inhumane treatment at our borders, and the apartheid and war crimes in Gaza. We stand in solidarity with those whose human rights have been violated, whose sanctity of life has been disregarded, and whose pursuit of freedom has been denied. We are not the first to recognize this moral responsibility. That is why environmental, social, and government funds, or ESG, are now offered by many financial institutions and have become a mainstream part of investment banking. It may take some time for the city to transfer funds into ESG or socially responsible investment or SRI funds, but we will not compromise on the rate of return. I want to assure our residents that this is not a novel concept, but a well-established practice followed by many organizations and individuals for sustainable investment. We do not want to profit from the war and killing of thousands of men, women, and children in Gaza who have no place to go and are constantly bombarded and killed brutally for no reason. We do not want to profit from the prison industry's slavery practices that pay only eighty cents per hour without regard for safe working conditions. And we do not want to profit from separating mothers and children at the border and imprisoning them. We do not want to profit in any way from handcuffing hundreds of patients and healthcare workers and killing them at point blank. Enough is enough. With all the war crimes occurring in Gaza, we are here to say that our collective conscience is awake and our sense of morality is alive. This is to affirm our own sanity and humanity. Tonight, we are doing what Congress should have done. Our state and federal leaders have let us down. Responsibility has fallen on our college students, who have stood up to declare that this nation will not be complicit in mass murder and genocide. The media may portray pro-Palestinian protesters as a threat to Jewish students on campuses, using this as a pretext for the government to suppress peaceful protests with heavy-handed police tactics and mass arrests. However, many of those protesting students are Jewish themselves. I salute all of them, and I'm grateful that together we stand for justice and humanity.
All y'all took ten, two minutes to express your opinion. So, I'm going to start mine two-minute timer now to be in solidarity with y'all.
Can you stop the timer?
Yes, sir. I also have it on my phone. It will beep. She doesn't do it. Yeah, I'm just going to come from it, from my personal opinion, just being a resident of Earth, a resident of Richmond. of Earth, a resident of Richmond. For me, every time I think about this subject, I think about the news reports that I've gotten, people who have survived and given testimonies who are screaming for help, saying they don't have water, food, struggling to find shelter, dealing with rolling blackouts, and just trying to migrate as far away as possible to get to safety. I think of the kid who talked about carrying another decapitated kid to a pile of dead bodies and just having to talk to the news about that. I think about the little girl that was screaming, who was trapped as a tank was approaching on them. And I think about that the day we passed our ceasefire resolution, at that point, it was about 5,500 folks in the Gaza Strip that were killed. Today, it's 34,000, 35,000, but that's an estimate because folks lost count. I don't want to profit or have the city profit off of other people's suffering. And I don't want to enable somebody else's prejudice and who is hiding behind propaganda to fuel a genocide that is slaughtering kids and families. It's not okay, and we need to start somewhere. And I hope other cities pass a divestment policy like this, and that the rest of our national leaders start to wake up and take this seriously. And in closing, I'm gonna say ceasefire now and free Palestine from genocide and oppression.
Councilmember McLaughlin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I want to thank all the wonderful speakers. You were so inspiring, so articulate, just so, speaking from your heart. You filled up my heart. So thank you. It was amazing. I too am proud to be a co-sponsor of this item. And I want to say a few things. First of all, if we make very valuable statements, like we did in October, being the first nation calling for a ceasefire, and then we profit from investments that are participating in the Palestinian occupation and the horrors and genocide in Gaza, then we are being hypocrites, and we are complicit, not unlike our national government. They talk out of one side of their mouth, saying that they are telling the Israeli government that they should do everything possible to avoid civilian killings, which of course is not doing an iota of good. And then out of the other side of their mouth, they approve billions of dollars of war machinery and weaponry to, to the Israeli government with our tax dollars. They are being hypocritical. They are being complicit in genocide, as your signs so rightly say. So I want to just share with you just a little bit, a couple of sentences here. I first learned about the Palestinian, Palestinian occupation when I was a young student in the 1970s, when a Palestinian group had a Palestinian speaker come to speak to us and show us a documentary on the 1948 Nakba. And my eyes were opened then, and it was, you know, clearly something that I was wrapping my arms around and supporting the solidarity of the Palestinian movement back then. And it continued with me throughout my adult life. Now, today, look where we're at. We have young students all over the nation standing in solidarity with the Palestinian cause. And, I mean, they are doing so much to raise the consciousness of the population. Even mainstream media has to show some of what is happening there, even if they try and restrict it or try and curtail it. But it is reaching people. And so I want to just shout out to all the young people, all of you here today, people of all ages, of course, standing against this, this genocide in Gaza. But I want to especially thank the young people for opening your eyes and really taking a stand and not letting go of it. So thank you. So I also want to state that, that what we're doing is not only standing for the Palestinians throughout the occupied areas of, that Israel has occupied, but we're also standing, and others have said this, for our own humanity. So if we don't take a stand, we lose our humanity. So tonight, I know, and when it's the appropriate time, Mr. Mayor, let me know, and I would be happy to make a motion. I know that we are uplifting our humanity. So I will wait for that appropriate moment, but I have one more thing to state. It's not only the companies that we want to restrict, but the banks that are participating in this, those commercial banks that are participating in violence and war and detention centers and all the things that were talked about in the presentation and the agenda report. And we in Richmond are part of the creation of an East Bay Public Bank, along with other East Bay cities and counties. And so we'll be having, the next step will be coming to council soon. We have our business plan. And so this will be an opportunity for us to do something good, put our money into socially responsible programs and policies. So we not only have to divest from the bad, we're investing in the good. So that is something that will be coming forth. But I'll stop there. Thank you all again. And, Mr. Mayor, tell me when it's time for a motion.
Well, right now, I would like to ask if Councilmember Robinson has any words. And I want to apologize to Councilmember Robinson. It's out of sight, out of mind, and I'm so sorry that it's that way.
Can y'all apologize for Councilmember Robinson, for, I mean, can y'all clap for Councilmember Robinson for calling and staying on this whole night?
Okay, I'm really, I'm really happy to be able to be a part of this and listen to everyone tonight. I think it's really important to hear each other. I'm gonna make it quick, though, because it is 1:28 here in Tennessee, and I'm fading. But, you know, I'm actually here to speak to some of our senators and congressmen about climate, but I think, I think I'll probably say some words about this issue as well. And I'm not gonna make it really long. I feel like the words that we heard tonight from all the council people, especially Councilmember Bana, was particularly eloquent tonight. I don't need to repeat those things. I just feel like I'm very proud of my city. I'm very proud of us to take on this issue, to be courageous, to try to stand and be in alignment with our values. It's not an easy thing to do in this world. We're really taught, you know, that it's not a necessary thing, that you can just ignore things that are painful and that are wrong in the world, and just go about your life and, and not worry about other people's hurt and pain. And so I'm just really proud of ourselves tonight, that we're, we're creating a different road. It's not gonna be an easy road. We have to kind of figure out the details so that it's not symbolic. But I am proud of us, of us tonight. And I just want to get to the vote. Thank you.
I will, I just want to make one more statement before I turn it over to Councilmember McLaughlin. I want us to realize that Puerto Rico is an actual protectorate of the US government. They have representation in Congress. And yet, Israel gets far, much more money than a protectorate which is under our care. What does that say? And something that I learned in Alcoholics Anonymous, a friend, let's see, friends do not help friends commit genocide. So let's be a friend to Israel.
And not let them commit genocide. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's well said. So I'm gonna make a motion here. So my motion is to direct staff to review and modify our investment policy and come up with options and recommendations for the four restrictions as presented in the agenda report and presentation, and for potentially coming up with new socially responsible investments. And these options and recommendations can be through coming up with new investment groups. They also should be presented to the city council by July 2nd, at least an update as to where we're at, and subsequently to the HR, HRC, the Human Rights, Human Relations Commission, to come up with a framework to annually review the companies, banks, and that we are restricting, and making sure from year to year, those restrictions are implemented and followed.
Second?
I would like to make a friendly amendment to asking the city administration to write letters to LEF, Cal Trust, and Mechanics Bank, informing them of our decision and urging them to divest as well.
That's, that's fine, yeah.
Can I make one recommendation to the council and to the mayor? And just drafted this quickly, but I want to make sure that if you, if you agree, that the proposed restrictions, particularly restriction number one, is intended as a constitutionally protected protest of the policies of the current, I should slow down here, but of the current government of the State of Israel regarding the people of Palestine and the war in Gaza. It is, it shall not allow, and this is key, any discriminatory actions against any person on the basis of religion, creed, ethnicity, national origin, or any unlawful basis. So that incorporated in any sort of further revisions to the city's investment policy.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I mean, I think if you could, if the city clerk captured what was just said by the, she's got it, I think we're good.
I'll email it.
Okay, all right.
We also have this recorded.
Take a vote?
Yes, we're recording it. Okay. So we have a motion by Councilmember McLaughlin, second by Councilmember Willis. Councilmember Bana?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jimenez?
Yes.
Councilmember McLaughlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Robinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Willis?
Yes.
Councilmember Zapata?
I'm going to abstain.
And Mayor Martinez?
Yes.
The motion passes with-
I, can I, can I say something?
Excuse me. Let me, let me clarify the motion. The motion passes with Councilmember Zapata Epstein.
Can I say, finish something? I just wanted to say thanks to the owner of Palom Halla for being here and for providing food. Thank you so much. And if you don't know his market, please go, it's on San Pablo, Matt Bright, District 6. Thank you.
And with that, this meeting is adjourned.